Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays. So I just wanted to do all that and whichever one, Merry Christmas and all of those famous greetings. For muscle and anything else, blessings to you and your family and loved ones as we celebrate the season, the reason for the season. And it's important that all great Americans do understand that. And I'm happy to say, federal government may shut down, but local government remains open to serve our constituents and the citizens of the Eastmanne's of Palestine. And that's someone we believe in, local government, because it's the best form of government that's closest to the people. Amen? Okay, y'all don't wanna say it, but I'll say it. All right, church regular meeting, healthy December night, twenty twenty-five, six P M. Beautiful downtown, sixty-sixth Stone Street. Imocation will be performed by yours truly, Deputy Mayor Weeks.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then a pledge of allegiance will be served by one, two, three, four, five. Especially with Rob Cramp on that whole road with you, that's here with you to support you, to show you love. You all will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. A okay? A okay?
A okay.
All right. All right. So without further ado, what everyone, please, let me include myself, secure your cell phones. Rise. Turn my phone off. Okay, it is off.
Okay.
May I would lead this?
You bet. Y'all would bow your heads. Oh, definitely, Father, we just thank you so much for this glorious Christmas time. We just thank you so much for sending your son the reason for the season. And Lord, we just ask you to give the council wisdom this evening, be with each one here, let us hear what they have to say. And, Lord, just help us to make wise decisions. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Face the flag. All right.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, we have Ms. Laura Chabot here tonight. Would you do roll call for us, please, ma'am?
Mayor Blake.
Present, ma'am.
Deputy Mayor Weeks.
Here.
Councilmember Goines.
Here.
Councilmember Hearn.
Present.
Councilmember Cos.
Here.
And City Attorney Garganisi. And City Manager Stockton.
Okay, seeing that we have roll call completed, proceeding on to item number two dash one. Agenda regular meeting of December the ninth, twenty twenty-five. Chair would like to make a motion to approve December ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, I got a request.
I'm sorry.
No, ma'am, you could. Regular city council meeting agenda with an amendment to add awards and presentations. Item number three, decimal point two, a proclamation for the Cocoa Fourteen and Under Youth Football Team. And to add city business, item number eight dash three, a request to review and approve developers' proposed revisions to the residential architectural elevation for the Windward Preserve, P U D. Chair would like to make that motion and entertain the second.
Second.
Second from Deputy Mayor Weeks. Chair is gonna call the question, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it unanimously. Proceeding on to item number two dash two, minutes, second budget meeting hearing for September the twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. What are the wishes of council?
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a motion on the floor by Deputy Mayor Weeks and a second by Councilman Hearn. Chair is gonna call the question, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it unanimously. Proceeding on to awards and presentations. We would like to bring up the first one, proclamation, National Homeless Persons Memorial Day, twenty twenty-five dash eleven sixty. Um, would council please and staff or city managers, city attorney, meet us down below. The honorable Mr. Rob Cramp, please come forward and the host of celebrities that you bring with you, sir. You are a beloved young man. Come on down, come here. Thank you. Come on, Mr. Cramp. Hello. Hello. You were right here, right? Over here on the side. No, 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 you're right here, man. Yes, you are. Thank you, thank you, brother. We would like to share this proclamation because we are a firm believer in those individuals throughout Brevard County and this nation. Um, unhoused is the new buzzword, I think, is that the term they use, ladies and gentlemen? Whereas homelessness has caused and or have hastened the deaths of unsheltered, inadequately housed people in Brevard County. The spirit of the holiday, the season of giving providers the opportunity for affirmation and renewal regarding the commitment to end homelessness, on December the twenty-first, the first day of winter, the longest night of the year, has been designated National Homeless Persons Memorial Day by the National Coalition for Homeless, the Brevard County Continuum of Care, C O C. A wide-ranging regional body of organizations from all sectors, community advocates, works every day to help people survive, build their lives, and end homelessness. In this season of generosity and sharing, the citizens of Brevard County are encouraged to commit themselves to promote compassion and concern for our unsheltered or inadequately housed neighbors in remembering those who have died in on our streets, in our emergency shelters, and condemned or abandoned properties from ailments or conditions directly related to homelessness. The cause of ending homelessness is kept urgent as the collective commitment to preventing such deaths in the future. Now, I, Michael C. Blake, on behalf of the greatest council on this side of the great St. John's River in the great city of Cocoa, do by here proclaim December the twenty-first, twenty twenty-five as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. Now, would everyone raise your right hand, please, ma'am, please, sir, your deodorant is working. That's la di da di in everybody in the audience too, because you all have been sworn in. I'd like Dubai here set our hand and cause of the great seal of the great city of Cocoa to be affixed this ninth day of December, twenty twenty-five. Let's give ourselves a round of applause, please. This young man that I'm going to present this proclamation to has been instrumental. And also, there's teamwork, there's dream work, and you make the tree of knowledge come to fruition. And Mr. Rob Cramp and others that support him work diligently to have a positive impact in our community. So on behalf of the great city of Cocoa, we say thank you, sir, for being a faithful and great servant for the people, by the people, because we are all in this together. We're all God's children, amen?
Amen.
So let's give Mr. Rob Cramp a round of applause. Also, I would like for him to share a few words with us. Um, this young man has dedicated his life in providing service for the people. Um, there's a scripture in the Bible from Matthew, you've been a good and faithful servant, you rule over few. Now, since you've done outstanding job, sir, you will rule over many because you have affected the hearts of many. And you will always be remembered, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. It's been a, it's a good timing, actually, I actually retire in two weeks.
What?
And and we have a great replacement, in fact, I was gonna make a joke about this, it's the first, we've been going for now for thirty-six, thirty-seven years, our agency has been in action, and we've found the first qualified person to run it, because I was never qualified. However, we've managed despite that, and we've worked really hard. We're not only, um, you may be familiar, we have a development for ninety units on, um, Wichita Avenue called Orchid Lake. We're opening another one in Holly Hill in Volusia next month, another seventy units. We're opening one for seniors in Titusville, uh, late next year, and another one back in Daytona. By the time, within two or three years, we will have a capacity as an agency of over a thousand beds. That would theoretically accommodate almost all the unhoused population of Brevard. Won't happen, but, you know, we're not trying very hard. So please remember, this is not, this is, you know, we're trying to eliminate it, but we've got a long way to go, you know? We really have, and we appreciate everybody's support, the support of the B H C here, um, in making it happen. So thank you very much.
All right, let's give Mr. Cramp a round of applause. Speaking of your board, would you be kind enough to introduce the members or let them speak on their own behalf? I don't care la di da di in everybody, there's always room at the top.
Leander Toley.
Leander Toley with the B H C.
Linda Graham, the chair of the, um, B H C Advisory Council.
Hi, I'm Ashley Miller with the Brevard Homeless Coalition.
Ashley and I, we did, uh, count of point?
Point and time count.
Point and time count.
Mr.
Go ahead, go ahead, ma'am.
I've known this guy for ten years, he knows more about housing the homeless than anybody I've, certainly more than I do.
Well, those are kind words, Rob. My name is Mark Sexton, I'm the H M I S Administrator for the Homeless Coalition.
Okay, I've been, um, been advised to let this young lady speak, uh, 'cause I don't want my arm twisted all the way behind my back, 'cause I don't want you all to see these crocodile tears. Go Gators, Miss Linda, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things I'd like to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. My friends. Okay, so, good evening, Mayor Blake, council, city manager, and staff. And I already introduced myself, but, you know, we already said, who's joining us, so it kinda, you know, it's gonna cut it down some. But thank you once again for recognizing December twenty-first as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. I'm gonna deviate a little bit from what I was going to say. Um, yesterday evening, as I stepped outside from a meeting on my way home, I was freezing, it was cold. But while driving, I noticed a man walking. I proceeded to drive home, and he proceeded to walk home. He walked into his home, which was a wooded area. If you would please kind of put yourself in my shoes just for a minute. I arrived home, and I fumbled for my key to open my door, and I thought about the older gentleman. He didn't have to fumble for his key, he had no door. I immediately turned the heat on to take the chill off my house. Again, I focused on the older gentleman, who didn't need to turn his heat on, because his temperature was already set on cold. Trying to defocus, I went to the kitchen to have dinner. My mind again focused on this older gentleman, who had a backpack on his back, which probably contained everything he owned, probably no hot meal. Later that night, as I prepared to lay down on my bed, I could not help but wonder where the older gentleman would be laying. I prayed that he would at least have a blanket to lay on the cold ground. I had to add him to my prayer. I thank God that he had made it this far. My consolation was knowing that he wasn't among the seventy-eight men and women who died this year without a safe place to sleep. Seventy-eight of our neighbors, part of our community. Some were grandparents, some were parents, but the one thing that we all have in common is that they were all somebody's child. We should all be thankful if we know where our children are, and we know that where they are offers them a safe place to sleep at night. We have made progress, but we still have over one thousand homeless individuals. And Brevard County still remains in the top ten counties in Florida for homeless residents. Fifty-seven percent of the individuals entering jail reported that they were homeless at the time of booking. In many cases, the jail gives them a place to sleep and three meals a day. And this tells us something important. Our law enforcement and first responders are carrying an increasingly heavy burden as they respond to the ripple effect of homelessness and an unfunded mandate, House Bill thirteen sixty-five. And so, right now, I do want us to give, I know the chief is not here, but you're sitting in his stead, but the the police department and the fire chief and all of the first responders a hand, because they do a lot, and we appreciate you. We really do. So let's continue to work together as change makers. And I wanted to give a special thanks to Rob Cramp, who has been a leader in the fight to end homelessness. And you've already given, um, your spiel, but he has been, he calls me his his mum, how you say it, mum? His mum. Yeah, and so he he gets out of hand sometime, and mum has to get him straight, but I I do. But, um, I do thank you, Rob, for being a leader in the fight against homelessness or for homelessness. And all that you have done, um, and I thank you for always thinking out of the box, well, I say that, but really, not going near the box. So, you know, we thank you, because you don't even go near it, so. In closing, I would certainly like to again thank the city officials and staff for your leadership and continued support as you stand with us as partners to build a housed and healthy Brevard. And on December eighteenth, we will be having our homeless memorial at the real church, the best church in Cocoa, but that, you know, it's not here, but anyway, best church in Cocoa. And, um, and it's at six P M., so we ask that you join us, and we again thank you.
In conclusion, I would like just to summarize this. Sometimes we do not know what's in front of us or behind us, but we know what's inside of you and what you've done for our community and the citizens of Brevard County. So that glow that you have about yourself, Rob, and your staff too as well, job well done, young man, job well done. All right, is it photo op time, ma'am? Any of the council members would like to say anything? Uh, any of the council members would like to say anything, because we have one in District Four, or is that, yeah, that's your district, right? Councilwoman Cos? Lake Orchid, you were there at the dedication. Well, yeah, ma'am, you got it, whatever, yeah, you got it, yes, ma'am.
One thing, while we're all, I guess you're all citizens of Cocoa, it's, we have been amazed when we, because we've never done this. Lavanda was saying, I remember in the early days that Cocoa has never built anything like Orchid Lake before. And we're, you know, homeless people, we're expecting a lot of opposition, not once, not once has any neighbor in our area, anyone in the city of Cocoa has objected to what we do and said, we don't want you, they've made us feel welcome. So we really congratulate to everybody, you've set a sample, because this hasn't happened in other parts of the county, believe me. Here, Cocoa accepted our people, our residents for what they were, and I'm very, very grateful.
Thank you. Let's give Mr. Cramp a round of applause. Councilwoman Cos, do you, would you like to say anything?
Well, just to say. I'll just say that I think the community has been very impressed and is very satisfied with having Orchid Lakes amongst them. And thank you for being such a great neighbor.
Okay, all right, thank you. And one else from the council, going once, going twice, take the microphone, ma'am.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Okay?
Thank you.
All of that.
Yes, sir. Yeah, he's next, one more.
So can we have the two representatives from, uh, Cocoa Youth Football?
Come on down. Yeah, 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 we're gonna put the ladies here. To your right, it's all yours.
Good to see y'all. All right, so we're gonna read this.
Come on, come on, here we go.
Don't be shy.
Wait a minute. There you go, there you go, there you go.
All right. So whereas the city of Cocoa. I know my eyes ain't going out on me.
Want my glass?
Whereas the city of Cocoa proudly recognizes the importance of organized youth sports as a vital part of a healthy, well-rounded community, providing young people with opportunities to develop discipline, teamwork, leadership, and character. And whereas the participation in organized athletics has been shown to positively influence academic performance by reinforcing time management, goal setting, accountability, and respect for authority, skills that translate directly to success in the classroom and beyond. And whereas the Cocoa Tigers fourteen U Youth Football Team represents the city of Cocoa with distinction, commitment, and pride, serving as, serving role, serving as roles, role models, I'm sorry, for younger athletes throughout the community. And whereas during the twenty twenty-five season, the Cocoa Tigers fourteen U Youth Football Team achieved an extraordinary milestone by winning a national championship, a testament to their hard work, perseverance, and dedication, both on and off the field. And whereas the team also captured its third consecutive A C Y A A Division One Super Bowl championship, demonstrating sustained excellence, consistency, consistency, and competitive leadership at the highest level of youth football. And whereas this remarkable success reflects the dedication of the coaching staff, including head coach Tony Williams and assistant coaches Antoine Ford, Adam Franco, Burke Lancaster, Kenneth Webster, Andretti Williams, Antonio Williams, whose mentorship, guidance, and commitment to youth development extend beyond athletics, to shaping young men of character and integrity. And whereas the accomplishments of the Cocoa Tigers fourteen U Youth Football Team bring great pride to the city of Cocoa and highlight the positive impact of teamwork, discipline, community support, and family involvement. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Cocoa, Florida, that the city of Cocoa hereby recognizes and congratulates the twenty twenty-five Cocoa Tigers fourteen U Youth Football Team and their coaches, families, and supporters for their outstanding achievements and contributions to youth development in our community. The city of Cocoa applauds these young athletes for setting a standard of excellence, sportsmanship, and academic responsibility, and encourages encourages them to continue striving for success on the field, in school, and in life. Now, wherefore, wherefore, oh my God, wherefore, I have here unto set my hand.
Yes, sir.
The seal, uh, the seal of the city of Cocoa be affixed this ninth day of December, twenty twenty-five.
All right.
So I'll just say this before I pass the mic, because y'all gonna say some words tonight. So as a, uh, a former coach of Cocoa, a father of a kid that's involved in youth sports, and I I just have a great appreciation for what you all do. You guys provide a safe space for the youth in the community. Um, every day that those kids are out there on the field with you all, you're keeping a kid out the streets and potentially saving lives. So I I certainly appreciate everything that you all do. And, um, I also want to give a congratulations to the eight U team as well, who also won their Super Bowl, correct?
Yes.
So congratulations.
They lost in the national finals.
Which is a big deal, which is a big deal, so, um, certainly continue the good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, on behalf, I am Alicia Phillips, the secretary of Cocoa Youth Athletics, um, our register, teen mom of the fourteen U, Jennifer Phillips. Um, we are over the moon, uh, for our kids, for all of our kids in our programs, from the six U flag up to the fourteen U. But we are extraordinarily proud of this particular team, because not only did they go over to nationals over in Davenport, Florida, in the pouring rain and win a national championship, but they also went fifteen and oh the whole season. We have now been in existence, going into our eighth year over at Stradly Park, and thank you. City council, thank you. Uh, we're finally getting, we got our field redone, uh, last year, and we're getting, uh, some additions to the building, so we are so overly excited for that, because now, not just are we going to have two hundred and fifty kids in our program, we're probably gonna have well over three hundred and fifty kids in our program. And that includes cheer, let me just say, that includes cheer. But with with that, our kids give everything they have on the field and off the field, because not only do we expect them to perform on the field, we expect them to perform in the classroom.
Right.
They are always student athletes, just like college, student athletes. Whenever they get in trouble in school or a parent has issues, the only thing that parent has to do is say, coach, they did, and it's over. The behaviors change, the grades improve, we are over the moon, ecstatic about these kids. Um, so, thank you, city council, thank you, surround, Cocoa, thank you, surrounding counties, surrounding cities of Cocoa for bringing your kids and entrusting your kids to us each year. Um, thank you to Cocoa P D, Fire Chief, uh, we've had some issues when when it comes out there, uh, but the kids give their all, and we hope that we can look for your support starting in January. We actually, we actually, the board takes a month off, so we take December off, half of December. So we will look, start fundraising, um, in January, so all of our local businesses will be reaching out to you, because we don't expect just for our kids to be here in the state of Florida, we expect for those talents to go beyond Florida. And I didn't want to say this, but if anybody saw the news, we we are, we. We have, we haven't hit two points, some are million followers, uh, not, I mean, for a good reason for us.
Right.
Um, so I'll let the mayor say something about that, but thank you guys very, very much.
No, 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 let's give her a round of applause. You hit the nail on the head, we we all talking about this, um, here's a beautiful thing about it, um, Sheriff Grady Judd, J U D D, Polk County, baby. Uh, this is indicative and the commitment of the parents and the organization as a whole, because there was an incident that took place, and, um, Sheriff, uh, Grady Judd thought that it was high school, but it's the youth. And the thing that I'm saying to you is that job well done, because you hold them accountable and you're transparent, and that's the beautiful thing about it, because the kids could have jumped across that line and gone the opposite direction, and we would have got pressed out of this world, but they did something positive, and I'm a firm believer in this. Why? Because our children are today's success and tomorrow's future. And we're banking on you and everybody in this room and beyond, in in Brevard County, to continue to work with our youth. Because the only thing we ever, never, ever will give up on our youth, we're gonna be like, I'm gonna do something to our youth, even the devil won't do, and that's turn them loose, I will hold on to them, we are gonna hold on to them. Why? Because we all have children and grandkids and great-grandkids and so forth, amen? So tell your staff, your president, straight from the horse's mouth, ah, that they have done a wonderful job with our youth. Okay, can we, can we move on? Move forward? Photo time. I'm getting rid of this mic, here you go, ma'am. I'm getting rid of this mic, here you go, ma'am. Alright. There you go, sir. Alright, good job, come on, come on. Come on over here, Wildcat. Come on over here, Swag. Come on over here, Wildcat. Okay, moving right along, thank you, Lotte Dye and everything. Proceeding forward to item number four, delegations. Please be mindful that you have three minutes or a hundred and eighty seconds to expound on your particular topic. Okay, that's on the report, to have one card from delegation, do we have any other cards from delegation? Saying none, uh, Alec Greenwood, come to the podium.
Greetings, Mayor, council members. Um, I just wanted to touch base on a couple of topics here. Uh, one, very quickly, uh, I had spoken to the representative of Waste Management. Uh, we still have to fine-tune the agreement that we have with this new contract. And, uh, he informed me that they're looking into the commercial aspect of how it's being handled. And I think that that's going to come up for discussion tonight. That would be something that could actually make the process look more successful. It's working better than it did, but we need a little more tweaking. I hope you all dwell into that a little more with the, and not only that, there's sometimes they're calling them multifamily, and then commercial gets confused. And there's just too much debris uh, from US One to Cocoa Village, that area, the consent decree area. There's too much stuff out front, and it doesn't look good, that's the main entrance. Now, in addition to that, uh, there's another item that's coming up for the, uh, City Council to vote on, and, uh, one thing that I wanted to, um, really stress, because being an ex-deputy mayor when I was on the council, there are very important subjects that you need to consider when you consider giving someone that honor. And that means, uh, it has to be someone that uh, wants the good of Cocoa, wants to continue its positive growth, and doesn't try to go out of their way to stop it. And one example of that is an article, uh, an item that I had brought up about the Ethics Commission on a council member here. You do not drive to a piece of property that is interested in considering a zoning change, taking pictures, and in another council member's district. You stay within your district. So for someone to go out of their way like that is not what a deputy mayor represents. They basically represent the council, but the deputy mayor is the spokesman when the mayor is not available. Um, the, other things that, that happened was taking pictures, uh, writing to, uh, have a permit not approved. And I, I want to stress something. This is not property that I own. This is fifteen acres on River Road. I own property across the street. And another statement was made that it's known that I'm not the owner, I'm a partner. That, that is, the partner that I have is on a property across the street from the one I'm talking about. Uh, and this is something you just don't, you don't turn away potential good development by basically taking over what the staff is supposed to be looking into, to approve what's being brought before the board here. There, there's more, I don't want to take any more time, but I just hope that this is something that you all, uh, would consider the points I brought up. Thank you.
Uh, councilwoman calls, ma'am.
Uh, yeah, I, you know, I don't think anybody really knows um, what the last speaker was talking about, but um, this probably, I don't know, it's gotta be over twelve times now to, um, to speak on the same su- subject. And it is directed at me, and in regard to the idea that I went into another council member's district, took pictures. We're talking about a neighborhood that is in my neighborhood. We may not, our, our map may not coincide with neighborhoods. In fact, um, if you study it, it's quite peculiar, our district map. Nonetheless, this is, this is, the particular property he was talking about is one that I walk by almost every day, at least drive by twice a day, know everyone in that neighborhood by their first name as they know me. And, um, in terms of, I'd just say that, um, again, as was ruled by the Ethics Commission and the ethics complaint that Alec Greenwood made against me, the ruling was that the complainant, and I'm, I'm quoting from the ruling, disagrees with the respondent's policies and her position with regard to the pres- preservation of wetlands and development. However, just because one disagrees with the policies and viewpoints of a public official, that does not mean the public official's actions are corrupt. So, uh, you know, again, over a dozen times that this has been brought up in delegations, we have a policy against this. Um, and I think it's just time, just, just, you know, put away the ax, I mean, I don't think anyone understands anymore, this goes back to twenty twenty-two, um, the original issues, and I think it's just, I don't think you're even serving your own cause as well by getting up and attacking me yet again.
Do we have any additional cards, Mrs. Singer or Mrs. Chabot? No? Thank you very much. This portion concludes delegations, we will proceed to item number five, Consent Agenda, what are the wishes of council?
Most to approve.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilman Hearn.
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Weeks, Chair is gonna call the question. Okay, I'm sorry, sir. Councilman Gons?
Yeah, so, um, on the consent, on the consent agenda, item number, uh, ten, um, at our last CRA meeting, um, there was a discussion that a resident brought about uh, noise being in parking lots, Cocoa Village after clubs are closing down. And so I wanted to bring it to the council publicly, uh, at our meeting, um, that I spoke to some officers last night at the League of Cities meeting. And some of those concerns are heard, they are aware of those issues. Um, and so we, our conversation was, and, and I'm pretty sure you know all about it too, when certain clubs close down at two o'clock in the morning, Oleanna parking lot gets full of people. Normally, uh, it is cars and music turning up real loud. Some of the residents are complaining about the noise. I talked to the owner about it as well, that's not their responsibility. But it is, you know, it's, it's the city's, which is officers' responsibility to take care of that noise. And so I just wanted to bring it up publicly, that we hear the concerns, it's not like we're ignoring it. Um, but that resident came at a CRA meeting. Um, and so, um, and I relate that to the chief as well, about the one thirty AM to two thirty AM is the hot hour, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you very much. Yeah, you, yes, we got a second for Deputy Mayor Weeks. Chair is gonna call the question, all in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ayes have it unanimously. Proceeding on to item number six dash one, the approval of the first addendum to amend and restate solid waste agreement twenty twenty-five dash eleven forty-one. Um, we are just trying to mirror the negotiations with them, the previous action we took part was dealing with solid waste service agreement. Waste management began in twenty twenty, excuse me, two thousand and six, renewed in twenty eleven, then a five-year renewal in twenty sixteen. February twenty twenty-first, City of Cocoa directed staff and negotiated a new contract with Waste Management. The revised contract was approved through ordinance number zero nine twenty twenty-five in September of twenty twenty-five. Now, I will hear from you, Mrs. Singer, but I just want to make sure I get the blessings of my city, our city attorney, Anthony Garganisi. Sir, you see anything?
Just need to read the ordinance in by title only.
So, yes, sir.
An ordinance of the City Council of City of Cocoa, Florida, modifying the solid waste franchise agreement between the City of Cocoa and Waste Management of Florida, Inc., attached here to, to correct an oversight, revising solid waste services, charges set forth on Exhibit A, providing for repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code severability, and an effective date. You know, as you know, Mayor, this is, this is to correct, um, the agreement to, uh, incorporate a few additional little minor, um, negotiation uh, terms that were not reflected in the, in the last ordinance that was passed.
Okay, sir, we have any questions? Uh, Deputy Mayor Weeks, ma'am.
What are the changes? That I didn't, I read through all of this, but I didn't.
Can I, can I do that?
Mrs. Singer is going to.
I'm so sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
I want to take away your thunder.
Oh, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
So it, it, what you all approved at the last one is what is in the current agreement. There were two additions in the last agreement that was with the agenda item, that had items that should not have been included about commercial service bulk pickup, um, that were not part of the agenda item and not what you had approved. So it's an error on my part, I did not see those things that were added and get them removed prior to the agenda, so it's strictly to remove those two items. Um, and then correctly reflect on the Exhibit A, the, the rate sheet, the commercial service rates that were approved again in the agenda at the meeting, were not reflected correctly on that Exhibit A. So this is strictly Scribner's errors that we are correcting for the record.
Any additional questions from Mrs. Singer? Before I open it to the public, anything else you would like to share with us, ma'am?
So everything is, again, remaining the same as what you all approved at that council meeting. Um, no rate differences, nothing like that, everything that we discussed, which is in the agenda item, is still current and active, and we did get, um, because the Exhibit A did not reflect the correct commercial service rates, the Waste Management did not start charging those correct rates until November, so we found the error, we corrected it, and so we got a, excuse me, a free month.
Alright, let's move.
On the old rates, so just wanted to make note of that as well.
Okay, let's move forward then. Okay, do we have any questions from council to Mrs. Singer? Saying none. Chair would like to close this portion to council and open to the public. Please come forward and state your name pertaining to this particular ordinance, item number six dash one. Going once, going twice. Chair would like to close this portion to the public and return it to council. What are the wishes of council?
Most to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Deputy Mayor Weeks, and a second by Councilman Hearn. Chair is gonna call the question, all in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ayes have it unanimously. Proceeding on to item number two, six dash two, Winward Preserve Final Plat. As you know, we're dividing the lots into this to make sure it becomes a subdivision. And I do know that you, it will be basically, um, the same aesthetics. Um, I know Mr. Eric Walsh, you're gonna talk about this and give us a presentation. But I just, just for precautionary measures, I always like to hear from my city attorney under public hearing, that's, we're gonna turn you loose, brother. Uh, Esquire Garganisi, any comments?
Uh, it is a public hearing, and, um, staff has a presentation regarding the, um, uh, the final plat.
Okay, thank you very much, Esquire. Mr. Eric Walsh, sir.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, great to be back, uh, here in Cocoa this evening to present the Winward Preserve Final Plat. Uh, so I'll run through the location of the subject property, talk about the existing conditions. Uh, introduce the request that's on your agenda this evening. Uh, I'll do a brief recap of the history, um, some of you may know there's about a twenty-year history on this property. I'll run through the findings, and I'll finally wrap up with a recommendation. So this one's gonna be south of State Road five twenty-eight and east of ninety-five. It's about two hundred and twelve acres in size, you can see the aerial on the screen, site's currently under construction. Uh, it's got a future land use map designation of very low density residential and conservation, which allows for consideration of up to four dwelling units per acre. And it was zoned planned unit development, uh, back in December of twenty twenty-three. Uh, the surrounding properties are generally within Brevard County to the south, west, and east. To the north, there's some ponds that serve the Bright Line. Uh, and there's additional property within the city of Cocoa, north of five twenty-eight. So this evening, uh, we're here to consider a final plat for three hundred and eighty-five single-family lots, uh, with tracks to include infrastructure uh, for right-of-way, recreation, open space, wetlands, wetland buffers, and stormwater. Uh, the proposed layout of the plat is on the right of the screen, and I'll walk through that in just a moment. Uh, another important part of the plat is identifying ownership and maintenance responsibilities for all of those tracks within it. Uh, as you can see, the, the rights-of-way and roads, landscape buffers, open space. Uh, the majority of the amenities within the plat are gonna be owned and maintained by either the HOA or the Community Development District that was formed for this community. Uh, the only publicly-owned track will be the lift station, which will be owned and maintained by the city. Last time was here, I did probably a ten-slide, uh, presentation on the history of this project, I'll skip that tonight. Um, suffice it to say, there are about twenty years of history, uh, starting with the project being proposed for annexation into the city in two thousand and four. That was challenged by the county, uh, at which time the county and the city entered into a stipulated settlement agreement in two thousand and eight. Uh, and that agreement outlined some additional standards in terms of buffering, access, and traffic calming. There were some additional standards agreed to by the city and a previous, uh, development entity in twenty twenty-two with a settlement implementation agreement. And then, of course, this was approved for rezoning to PUD, a large-scale site plan, and a subdivision uh, back in twenty twenty-three, that was in December. Uh, and finally, uh, engineering plans were approved by the city in twenty twenty-four, and construction continues today, so the final plat's one of the, the later steps in the entitlement process after you've already, you know, gone through the future land use, the zoning, the site plan. Um, you're well into your construction phase, and you're ready to subdivide the lots for final, uh, sale. And I'll just note also, in twenty twenty-four, they did receive a water management district permit, uh, and a inter-local agreement regarding James Road, uh, which is the segment that provides access to the subject property, there are two access points on James Road. Uh, so in our review, we reviewed for consistency with all of those previous agreements, we reviewed for consistency with the Land Development Code, and we reviewed for consistency with Florida statutes. Uh, so if you look on the screen, you can see kind of the original twenty twenty-two settlement agreement, uh, implementation agreement layout. And you can see the PUD plan matched that layout, and now the plat matches both of those documents, so really carrying forward the layout that was originally proposed, uh, back in twenty twenty-two. Uh, and the city surveyor signed off, uh, and determined that it's consistent with Chapter one seventy-seven of Florida statutes, that's the plating requirements. Uh, we do have a couple of conditions that we like to introduce, um, there are a few outstanding items, uh, you know, that are gonna require a revision from the applicant. So on the plat, there's three things, uh, one is identifying a FPL easement that's existing today. Uh, we've cited the, uh, OR book and page. Uh, the second is a minor cleanup to the track table, there was a blank, uh, for the ownership and maintenance for the roads. Uh, and number three, this is a new condition that was not in your staff report, that we just worked out yesterday. Um, there was a, they showed a utility easement adjacent to the eastern boundary of the plat, and that really needed to be a landscape buffer. So the applicants agreed to convert that to a landscape buffer, there are no utilities in that area, so there are no issues doing that, and they've agreed to it. Uh, in terms of the HOA covenants, a couple revisions here. Um, we wanted, uh, an. We wanted an update to reflect the track table and the ownership and maintenance responsibilities to Exhibit E. We wanted to resolve the conflicts between the covenants and the plat on the maintenance. There was a highlighted footnote that we sent a comment back on page 51 and then fill in all the blanks on the articles of incorporation, just for a final document. And then, finally, we're requiring an executed letter of credit in the form acceptable to the city attorney and executed conservation easements for all of the wetlands and wetland buffer tracks. So, we're going to record those simultaneously with the plat, so they're protected in perpetuity. With that, that's going to conclude my presentation. I'll stand for any questions, and I believe the applicant's team is here as well. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Rousch? Councilman Hearn, sir?
Yes, I had a question. I don't know if this is for the applicant or you can answer this. The drainage ditch to the south of the site, is that going to remain? And if so, are there any enhancements to it?
It's definitely an applicant.
Yeah. That's what I thought. That's that big, deep one. You're right.
So, it's a, it's a.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Julie Salva, I'm with Taylor Morrison. In answer to your question, that is a county-owned ditch, and it's not impacted by our project.
That's where the roadway, the entrance will be along that ditch area?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Goins to Deputy Mayor Hearn. Excuse me, Deputy Mayor Weeks.
Can you go back to HOA responsibility? So, the, the question that I had, because we just had this issue in another subdivision dealing with the road sidewalks, is that, that falls under responsibility for HOA or is that a city-owned road?
There, there's no city-owned roads within the community, so it would fall back on either the HOA or the CDD for those public tracks that serve the community. And I, I can, of course, introduce the applicant to elaborate on what they have planned for maintenance.
Hello again. This is a gated community, so all the roads behind the gate will be private and owned and maintained by the HOA.
Is that it, sir? Deputy Mayor Weeks?
My question is, it's hard to tell from looking at the plat. Where exactly are the two entrances? Is there going to be one main gate going in and then a, a back gate that the, only the owners can go out of, or how's that work?
I don't know, Eric, if you, if there's a better map you could show? Are you able to show it with the laser?
I don't know if there's a better map.
Do you have your laser light, sir? Look on your, yeah, there you go.
There's one kind of in the middle here that provides access, and then there's another one, I believe, right here, correct, Julie?
So, both can go in and out? Okay, so you don't have a main entrance and then a back gate? It's just two entrances and exits?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Both off of the James Road extension, right?
That's correct.
So, that it, council? I do support this project. You have my total and complete confidentiality of this project. So, I, I know I'm going to go against trend a little bit, but chair would like to make a motion to approve the windward preserve final plat. And I'm looking for a second, and I will open it up to the public. I know, I know. I got it. You second it? Okay. We have a second. Yes, ma'am, we have a second by Deputy Mayor Weeks. Now, do we have any other questions for Mr. Rousch? Saying none. Chair would like to close this portion to council and open to the public? Please come forward and state your name. Okay, would members of, come forward? You have any comments you would like to share with us? From the applicant? Yes?
Good evening, Julie Salva with Taylor Morrison. I just wanted to thank the mayor and council for supporting this project. Thanks, Eric, for the staff report. We concur with staff's recommendation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the audience? Saying none. Chair would like to close this portion to the public and return it to council? Chair is going to call the question, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Eyes have it unanimously. Okay, proceeding on to item number six dash three, request council to approve ordinance number 13 dash 2025 on the first reading approving a non-exclusive natural gas franchise between the City of Cocoa and Pivotal Utility Holdings, Inc., DBA Florida City Gas. In consideration of approval of the franchise agreement, be mindful, as you already know, the Florida City Gas pays 6% franchise fee to the City of Cocoa on a monthly basis. And also, I will stop right there. The name has changed several times, but I will turn it over to Esquire Garganisi so he can read it in, and then we will hear from Mrs. Bowman, the lady in red.
Okay, this is ordinance number 13 dash 2025, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cocoa, Florida, proving a non-exclusive natural gas franchise between the City of Cocoa and Pivotal Utility Holdings, Inc., a New Jersey corporation, DBA Florida City Gas, attached here to, providing for repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions incorporation into the code severability and an effective date. This is first reading in a public hearing item. The City of Cocoa's previous franchise agreement was entered into in April of 1993. That agreement has expired. As you noted, Mayor, there has been some, some corporate reshuffling with the parent company and a, and a sale of the pivotal holding, utility holdings. So, that kind of held up the renewal, but this franchise proposes to grant in the new 30-year franchise agreement. And as you noted, Mayor, the franchise fee will remain at 6% of the, of the revenues based on the gross revenue formula in the, in the franchise. So, I don't know if Rebecca had anything to add regarding this, but it's, you know, pretty, I think, standard franchise agreement. Be happy to answer any technical questions.
Do you have any questions for Esquire Garganisi, council? Councilwoman Carlson, Deputy Mayor Weeks?
I'm not sure if it's a question for you or Rebecca, but the, what do we generate from the franchise fees?
Roughly $100,000 a year for general fund.
Okay, and that's at the current 6%?
6%.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Weeks, ma'am?
I was just going to say, so is there, in the future, where more customers will be able to be hooked up to gas? I know that it's non-exclusive, but I get asked that all the time. Why don't we have more gas lines in the city? A lot of people would like gas in their homes, especially when you lose power. You still could cook, so.
Yes, to my knowledge, the Florida City Gas works with the City of Cocoa, looking at new developments like windward preserve and opportunities for them to expand their lines so they can increase their business, and then the city would benefit from that.
That's what I thought, so. So, windward preserves is going to have gas too?
No, I didn't say that. I said possibility.
Possibility.
Depending on what the agreement is with where their lines are and connections and things like that.
Great, thank you.
My excellent point, ma'am. I too have gas at my house. It was constructed back in 1952 by grandparents. I purchased their home, and we have gas. And that's the beautiful thing about gas. I can still cook if I lose electricity.
That's it.
And I can take a hot shower or cold water shower, but it's great to have options. All right. Okay. Do any additional questions before I open it up to the public? Saying none. Chair would like to close this portion to council and open to the public? Please come forward and discuss this particular item, ordinance number 13 dash 2025, and its first reading. Going once, going twice. This is a no-brainer. Chair would like to close this portion to the public and return it to council. What are the wishes of council?
Moved to approve.
We have a motion on the floor by Deputy Mayor Weeks. Second by Councilman Goins. Chair is going to call the question, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Eyes have it unanimously. We got it? Deputy Mayor Weeks made the motion, and Councilman Goins seconded. I'm sorry, I didn't speak. Yes, ma'am, I didn't speak clearly, so I, I'll take the blame. I apologize. Okay, proceeding on to item number six dash four, PZ dash 2500200015, Michael C. Blake Subdivision Large-Scale Site Plan, and PZ 25 dash 00100002, Michael C. Blake Subdivision Preliminary Plat. We know, I think, we're going to have a groundbreaking ceremony sometime in January. I think the city manager will maybe enlighten us when that will happen, but I do support this event. Previous action, you already know, we approved the council, the development and agreement back in April 22nd, 2025. December 3rd, PNZ approved it on their large-scale site plans. Esquire Garganisi, sir?
Staff is going to make a presentation on this item.
Okay, Mrs. Webster, ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to all the city council. So, as the mayor was saying, this is the item for the Michael C. Blake Subdivision Large-Scale Site Plan and Preliminary Plat. This is to construct affordable housing in the Michael C. Blake Subdivision in Cocoa, Florida, Diamond Square CRA for potential homeowners classified as either very low, low, or moderate-income persons as defined in Florida statutes and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the development of 15 existing parcels of real property into 30 affordable single-family homes. So, this, this property is, the subdivision actually affects approximately 2.56 acres of city-owned property located generally on Mango Avenue, Valencia Avenue, and Blake Avenue between Barbara Jenkins Street and Stone Street. The subject parcels are zoned RU1-7, single-family residential with a future land use designation of medium-density residential, which allows up to 15 dwelling units per acre. The applicant and developer is Lennar Homes. Representatives are Raphael Nelson, Anna Myers out of Palm Beach. The engineer is Mills Short and Associates, and I believe we do have representatives from the, for the applicant, for the engineer in the audience this evening if you have questions following the presentation. And as mentioned, the project location is in Diamond Square CRA between Mango, Valencia, Blake, between Barbara Jenkins and Stone Street. And so, a short project history, September of 2024, the city did publish a request for proposal for the redevelopment of this property into affordable single-family homes. And in October of '24, Lennar submitted the proposal to develop the property, and the city council selected Lennar for further negotiation of a development agreement. And on April 22nd, 2025, city council approved the concept plan development agreement and purchase and sale agreement for the Michael C. Blake Subdivision. And on June 23rd, 2025, Lennar submitted the Large-Scale Site Plan, a preliminary plat for review and approval by city staff. And on December 3rd, 2025, as Mayor mentioned, Planning and Zoning Board unanimously recommended that council approve the site plan and preliminary plat. And so, the project, as you may be familiar, is generally depicted on this approved conceptual development plan to be constructed in accordance with the requirements set forth in the development agreement. The project proposes three different floor plans, each offering three different exterior elevations for a total of nine different elevations for architectural diversity and a broader range of choices for residents. Each home will have a minimum of two and a half bathrooms and three to four second-floor bedrooms. There is a fourth floor plan for the two lots between Temple Street and Barbara Jenkins Street. That is a single-story floor plan, but these lots were approved and permitted separately as they're not part of the Michael C. Blake Subdivision and plat. And so, in development of the 15 lots into 30 smaller lots, as depicted in the typical lot detail shown here, several variances to the City of Cocoa code were required, all of which were incorporated into the development agreement. When being the, reducing the lot, the minimum lot size, reducing the minimum lot width and depth, reducing the maximum lot coverage, actually increasing the allowable maximum lot coverage from 30% to 50%. However, the applicant was still, needed to meet the required impervious area, so, which they did in the site plan. And so, this is the first of three floor plans. This is the Breeze, which is 12, about 1,300 square feet, three bedrooms, two and a half And the second floor plan is the Cypress, which is 15, about 1,500 square feet, three bedroom, also two and a half bath. And the third floor plan is the model called the Element, which is the four-bedroom model, two and a half bath at around 1,700 square feet. And you might notice in the elevations that the orientation of the front door was all the same, but in the site plan, in the final site plan that was approved, the, the design is to alternate the building elevations so that, to provide a little bit of variety along the roadway. And so, accordance with the city code and in consideration of the variances and waivers that were granted, the developer was asked to provide several development enhancements into the final site plan. And so, one is, of course, to develop these as affordable single-family homes as defined by HUD, that the applicants be income-qualified to ensure the purchases are classified as very low, low, or moderate-income persons as defined in the Florida statutes. They, the applicant is to provide enhanced landscaping, fencing, and playground equipment for the Harry T. Moore Center, and also to incorporate the use of energy-efficient building methods and materials in the new homes. And regarding item three, the city staff is currently developing and designing this enhanced landscape and fencing and playground equipment plan for the Harry T. Moore Center to provide to the applicant, which they will fund and implement per the development agreement. And this will go before the Diamond Square CRA board before, for review. And so, the site plan was reviewed by the development committee, Development Review Committee, including utilities, public works, fire, environmental control, and planning, and was approved by all departments. The developer is providing connection to the existing infrastructure, including drainage modifications and water, wastewater, and irrigation connection. No tree mitigation was necessary, and the developer, developer meets the minimum tree and landscaping requirements. The preliminary plat was also reviewed by the necessary departments and an outside third-party surveyor to ensure compliance with state law. And so, the site plan and the preliminary plat do align with the goals, objectives, and policies of the City of Cocoa, comprehensive plans, future land use element, and housing element specifically, as well as those of the Diamond Square Redevelopment Plan, including for redevelopment and promoting vitality and redevelopment in the two CRAs, and in the housing element as well, including encouraging, promoting the provision of decent, safe, and sanitary housing. And these are also provided in the staff report. So, staff requests that city council approve the Large-Scale Site Plan and Preliminary Plat for the Michael C. Blake Subdivision, consisting of 30 single-family homes, consisting of approximately 2.56 acres, which are generally located north of Barbara Jenkins Street and between Mango and Blake Avenues.
Do we have any questions for Mrs. Webster? Excellent presentation, ma'am. Concise and to the point. I, I, I do thank you for your commitment and dedication and intuitiveness of this project. Any questions? Saying none? Oh, sorry. I apologize. Councilwoman Carlson?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask how the stormwater is being managed on these homes? Do we have, is the stormwater, is it diverted to the pond that we have over there? How does that work?
The, the stormwater, they are actually making some modifications to the existing stormwater design, and the, the stormwater is being collected into the stormwater system in the
She's talking about a Thomas Cole? Are you speaking of reference?
Yeah, that would be the Thomas Cole stormwater pond, right? So, and so we know that we have the capacity.
Yes, yes, that, as I mentioned, the, all of the, including public works, the development Development Review Committee has reviewed and approved the final site plan, of course.
Okay, alrighty. Any other additional questions? Because, um, there will be a lot of similarities to item number five, too, as well when we get there, basically. Um, okay, Chair would like to close this portion to council, open to the public. Please come forward and state your name and your address. Uh, do we have, uh, Lennar Homes here, or? The applicant? Come forward, young man.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Madam, uh, Deputy Mayor, City Council, Mr. Whitten and Ms. Webster, thank you for the presentation. Um, this has been a great collaboration with the city. Happy to be a part of this project. My name is Dan Soro with, uh, the engineer, Mills Short and Associates, representing Lennar Homes. And, uh, your city staff has been excellent to work with under Mr. Whitten's leadership. Your turnaround time has been fantastic. Um, happy to be here before you. As staff mentioned, uh, full staff recommendation, Planning and Zoning Board recommendation. Uh, and we're thankful for your support tonight and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I have one question, sir.
Um, real quick, are you gonna build a model home, uh, or are you just gonna build them all and, um, you know, sell them, uh, as spec homes?
Well, Lennar's model for development is building inventory homes. So, they'll, uh, build out the entire subdivision, all thirty. In fact, we've already started on the two lots that aren't part of the subdivision. Um, and then we'll be seeking qualified homeowners to, uh, to live in those homes, so.
So, are you gonna have a sales office there is what I'm?
Maybe. So, so, um, I, we'll, we'll look into that if I can get you that answer after the meeting.
Besides being, I'm a Realtor, so that's why I was curious.
Typically, we will have a model home and a sales center in the garage of the model homes, and we'll be evaluating interested, um, homeowners, you know, in, in those proceedings. But, um, I, I think, uh, we're still trying to decide that. I wanted to get through tonight first.
I understand, yes, sir.
Okay, do we have any additional questions? You might, we'll assume that front-row position right there, my friend, because we coming back right back at you. All right, seeing any additional questions? Saying none? Chair would like to close this portion to the public and return to council. Chair would like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second?
Second.
Okay, okay, the second is? Councilwoman Goins, do you mind?
Not at all, that Councilwoman Goins has.
Okay, all right. It, it's, okay.
I know, it's his district, I got you, yes, sir.
Okay, Chair's gonna call the question all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it unanimously. Um, we good down there, city manager, we good on the motion? Okay. Yes, ma'am? Okay. All right, final item for item number six dash five. Um, similarities. PZ twenty-five dash zero-two zero 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 five, reasonable accommodation in certified recovery residence ordinance number twelve dash twenty-twenty-five, first reading twenty-twenty-five, ten-seventy-six. Um, um, Esquire Garganisi, I know you're gonna talk about the Florida state statutes and its requirement for local, um, legislative, but I am going to close my mouth, sir, and turn it over to you.
Okay, this is, uh, first reading of ordinance, uh, number twelve dash twenty-twenty-five. An ordinance of the city council of the City of Cocoa, Brevard County, Florida, amending Appendix A zoning, Article thirteen supplementary district regulations to add procedures for processing requests for reasonable accommodation from the city's land development regulations, which shall also be applicable to certified recovery residences in order to comply with Florida statute section three-ninety-seven point four-eight-seven, amending Article eleven, schedule of district regulations to add certified recovery residence as principal and special exception uses in certain districts, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code severability and an effective date. As you alluded to, Mayor, uh, Florida statutes was amended recently and requires the city to adopt an ordinance, um, regarding certified recovery residences. And, um, in conjunction with, um, the regulation of that particular use, the city's also required to adopt a reasonable accommodation, uh, policy, um, generally on the reasonable accommodation policy that under the Americans with Disabilities Act, um, and also the Fair Housing Act, there are times where, um, individuals request accommodation, uh, from existing, uh, city land development regulations and some, and in some cases, um, those, uh, regulations have to, uh, yield to, uh, address, uh, disability situation. Um, this, uh, ordinance proposes, um, a application and procedure process under which those types of, um, requests can be evaluated in a uniform and consistent manner. And I know Jen has a detailed PowerPoint presentation to share. Mayor?
So, yes, sir. We have any questions for Esquire Garganisi before we turn the floor over to Mrs., uh, Webster again? Saying none? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Esquire. Yes, I'll try to be, uh, quick and to the point and brief. Um, you've already, already been very descriptive about the ordinance itself. Um, so, just the history is that, um, in the, in the last regular twenty-twenty-five legislative session, the legislature passed Senate Bill nine-fifty-four, which mandates that municipalities adopt an ordinance to establish these procedures for the review and approval of certified recovery residences, including a process for requesting reasonable accommodations from any local land-use regulation which currently prohibits certified recovery residences. And this ordinance brings the City of Cocoa into compliance with Senate Bill nine-fifty-four and the Florida statutes, and creates a formal process to request reasonable accommodations from the city zoning code in compliance with ADA and the Fair Housing Act. So, recovery residences, also known as sober homes or sober living homes, are non-medical residential settings designed to support recovery from substance, substance use disorders, helping individuals transition from highly structured residential treatment programs back to their daily lives. These may be cooperatively organized and run by residents or operated by for-profit or nonprofit organizations. Certified recovery, recovery residences are those that obtain the voluntary certification outlined in the Florida statutes and are actively managed by a certified recovery residence administrator, who must also be certified. Yes. Uh, certified recovery residences must meet rigorous standards to become certified, including, um, uh, establishing a policy and procedures manual for drug testing, prohibiting the use of any alcohol or drug use on premises, recovery support, a good neighbor policy to, to address any issues with neighbors, establishing a code of ethics and rules for the residents, uh, relapse policy and eviction procedures, background screening and intake procedures, and the certificates that have compliance must be renewed yearly. And reasonable accommodations, uh, defined by the Fair Housing Act, is a change, um, exception, or an adjustment to a rule, policy, practice, or service, specifically including land use or zoning policies that may be necessary for a person with disabilities, including those requiring rehabilitation, to have an opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling, including public and common-use spaces. Where CRRs will be permitted outright in a zoning district, they will not have to request reasonable accommodation. This will be explained later. In districts where CRRs are not permitted by right in a zoning district, they will be required to request reasonable accommodations to the zoning code, such as, um, to allow them in single-family residential districts, uh, things like reducing setbacks for handicap ramps, increasing a maximum purpose area to add surface parking, uh, even accommodations to support animals. So, those are just a few examples of a request for reasonable accommodation. So, therefore, the city desires to add this new section thirty-four to Appendix A, Article thirteen of the city code, to establish procedures for the review of reasonable accommodation requests, including for certified recovery residences within the city. The procedures established under this ordinance include eligibility and application requirements, review process, general requirements, appeals and revocations. It includes the requirement for CRRs to be certified and managed as defined by the Florida statutes. And these will be, um, these applications will be reviewed, uh, and determined by the community services director, who shall either grant a request in full, in part, with or without conditions, or deny, uh, completely. And so, uh, the ordinance also amends the city zoning code, Article eleven, schedule of district regulations to add certified recovery residence as a principal use in, um, as, in principal use or uses by special exception in certain districts. So, in these districts, um, the RU-two-fifteen, multiple-family, RU-two-twenty-five, multifamily, RP, residential professional, CR, restricted commercial, CN, neighborhood commercial, in these districts, they will be permitted as a principal use. And, um, in these districts, they will be allowed as a use by special exception, which is, is of course, the Board of Adjustment hearing in the Professional Offices and Services District, General Commercial, and the Central Business District. And note that certified recovery residences will not be permitted in the single-family RU-one-dash-seven district unless they receive a reasonable accommodation under the process established in the ordinance. So, as with all zoning text amendments and pursuant to Appendix A zoning, Article twenty-one, uh, the planning, uh, pardon me, the city council, uh, reviews the, the need and justification for the change and also the relationship, uh, to the proposed amendment to the purposes and objectives of a com, comprehensive plan. So, the staff finding is that it does comply with the, um, uh, it brings the, it brings the city into compliance with the Florida statute section three-ninety-seven, as amended by Senate Bill nine-fifty-four, and that it is consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the comprehensive plan regarding nondiscrimination, Fair Housing Act, opportunities for those with special needs, elderly, and physically or mentally disabled, and it provides adequate location standards as required by the Florida statutes. And, uh, the prior action was that on December third, the Planning and Zoning Board did unanimously recommend the council approved of this first reading of ordinance twelve dash twenty-twenty-five. And finally, staff requests that city council approve the ordinance twelve dash twenty-twenty-five, an ordinance of the council of the City of Cocoa, Brevard County, Florida, amending Appendix A zoning, Article thirteen supplementary district regulations to add procedures for processing requests for reasonable accommodation from the city's land development regulations, which shall also be applicable to certified recovery residences in order to comply with Florida statutes, amending Article eleven, schedule of district regulations to add certified recovery residence as principal and special exception uses in certain districts, and providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability, and effective date. And thank you for your patience.
Job well done, ma'am. We have any questions for Mrs. Webster? Uh, Deputy Mayor Weeks? Yes, ma'am, come on.
Um, uh, I would like to know, and, um, I know you're saying that it's not gonna be allowed in RU, um, RU's one to seven, is that right?
Basically, single-family, uh, zoning districts.
Okay, so, uh, especially in neighborhoods with HOAs and that stuff, they can't, this won't circumvent anything that they have? Because I know there are things that do that, and I'm, you know, I'm not against, you know, this. I just wanna know what the restrictions are, so.
So, no, it won't, it won't circumvent, uh, anything for HOAs or excuse them for, for complying with HOA requirements. Um, likewise, HOAs, they can't outright ban the CRRs.
Right.
Due to, due to the Fair Housing Act protections.
Right.
Uh, for people with disabilities, and of course, including, uh, people who need recovery. Um, the CRRs may be subject to additional HOA regulations if those regulations are applied nondiscriminately, so.
Will there be an application fee for this? I don't see that in this either.
Uh, there, we're working on that. We're working on determining the application fee, and that we are, uh, also currently writing the application itself according to the, um, uh, description in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other additional questions for Mrs. Webster? Saying none, we would like to close this portion of council and open to the public. Please come forward and state your name. You have three minutes to elaborate on this particular item. Six dash five, PZ twenty-five dash zero-five-zero, reasonable accommodation certified recovery resident ordinance number twelve dash twenty-twenty-five. Going once? Going twice? Chair would like to close this portion to the public and return to the council. What are the wishes of council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Deputy Mayor Weeks, and a second by Councilwoman Cos. Chair's gonna call the question, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it unanimously. WM and PM? And the grand.
Thank you, council.
Proceeding forward to item number seven dash one, no-brainer. Um, consider the reappointment of Angelia Smith, Crystal McQueen, and the appointment of Amy Robinson of the Diamond Square CRA. I see Mrs. Robinson. Do we have any of those other members in the audience as well? Mr. City Manager, is, your name is on it? If not, chair entertains a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. His light was on. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead, man, I'm honored to acknowledge your light, go ahead.
Um, well, I was gonna make a motion.
Boy, you are Diamond Square. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, I will say, um, that this is an easy decision. All three are, are all qualified. They are very thorough, uh, team players. Um, the last two years, Diamond Square Board has been pushing really, really hard, and so, because they know they don't have much time left. And so, we need good people to be on the board, so I just wanted to make that statement.
Would you like to make the motion and help?
No, no, he got it.
Somebody make the motion.
Well, I did make the motion.
Okay. Uh, you want to second it?
He did. He need a second.
We need a second.
I made the motion, you gotta second.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Robinson, would you come to the podium, please, ma'am? Now, as the honorable city manager will say, do not unseal the card, no. Take your time, ma'am. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, Amy Robinson. Um, I don't have much to say. Thank you to Mayor Blake and the council for, I guess that'd be agreeing with staff? Okay, so, very excited to be coming back to the Diamond Square Board, especially as it's setting. I really wanna be a part of what they're doing and bring whatever expertise I have, whatever experience and perspective I have to the board to help continue doing what they've already been doing and the progress that they've made. So, I'm really excited to join back. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Guys have a wonderful evening.
Okay, Chair's gonna call the question all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it unanimously. Proceeding on to item number seven dash one, under, I mean, seven dash two, under council business. Um, this particular item was, uh, the appointment of liaison. I mean, I personally like the position where I'm at. I believe in continuity. I mean, we're all familiar with this. Um, I, I don't have a problem with me being, uh, keep, I would like to keep my current positions as stated. Are you good? Do we need to take a consensus? I got a light? Go ahead, ma'am, ma, ma, just let me hear from everyone. We'll go around, let's go. We're proceeding in this order. Councilman Goins is first, Deputy Mayor Weeks is second, um, our, our Councilman Hearn or Councilwoman Cos.
The question that I have with the Police Advisory Board, we don't meet anymore, so that's done. Um, the Sustainability Board is also a board that's, so, can, is the, can we just remove those boards, um, to be even on the list, I guess is my question, 'cause they, they're, they don't exist currently.
The Utilities Advisory.
Yep. So, can, can we do that, Anthony?
Yeah.
Okay.
All you gotta do is make a motion.
So, I, I make a motion to move, to remove the Police Advisory Board from the list, Sustainability Advisory Board from the list, and also the Utility Advisory Board.
Okay. And I'll second it for discussion. Um, Deputy Ma, uh, Weeks, ma'am, then Councilwoman Cos.
Um, well, I was, um, being that, uh, Councilwoman Cos does not have one, uh, have a, um, a liaison, uh, count, uh, thing to be. have a liaison, I think to be the liaison for than the Florida League of Cities, you know, if she wanted one of mine, you know, I love doing it, but, you know, if I do the Board of Adjustment or the Code Enforcement Board, I really like the Code Enforcement. I like Board of Adjustment, too. But if you would like one of those.
No, I appreciate it, but I'm fine. I also serve on the Economic Development Council.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You're the EDC.
As well as the Environmentally Endangered Lands Program. And I just finished, maxed out, termed out of the Save Our Indian River Lagoon. So, I have, as well as the Florida Solar Energy Center, I'm no longer on that board because it's dissolved. But I'm fine.
Okay. And I, you know, I know, Alex, that you're the, I'm sorry, Councilman Gohens, that you're the alternate for the Space Coast League of Cities, and that's something that, you know, I could do as well. So, just throwing it out there. Not that you have to give that up. I'm just, I didn't know if it was something that you wanted to continue.
I mean, I know that Mayor Blake is always going to be at those meetings, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good. Leave it as it is. So, we all good?
Okay, but I got two lights on. I'm just waiting.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's all right.
I forgot I had my light on.
Okay, it's okay, ma'am. Patience is a virtue. Councilwoman Cost?
No, I think, I don't, this is fine the way it is.
Okay. So, let me make sure we got it squared away. Councilman Gohens, you made the motion.
I know, I know.
And the second was by Deputy Mayor Weeks, correct?
We haven't made a motion.
Yeah, I think, yeah, okay, I got you. I just want to make sure I got my motion together. Is that correct, Councilman Gohens?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you second it? Okay. I will listen to you, Mrs. Councilwoman Cost. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
So, the motion is to get rid of these three committees, right?
Right.
Haven't we put those, the Utilities Advisory Board, the Sustainability Advisory Board, and the Police Advisory Board? I understand we're being preempted on that. But on the others, those were put in place formally with ordinances, I guess, or resolutions, or, I mean, legally, we're just going to cross them off the list? They're policy decisions.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a point of clarification. The, I guess, the direction that I'm hearing is that the council didn't want to place a liaison for the Sustainability, the UAB, and the PAB.
Right.
I think I heard that they weren't meeting any longer. So, I mean, it's council's prerogative whether you want to have a liaison. The additional question, I guess, for clarification is since you're not going to appoint a liaison for those boards that apparently are not meeting, does the council still want to have those boards? Or do you want to formally dissolve those boards?
And I would just, I still, my light's still on. The Utilities Advisory Board, as I've made note before, I believe is an important avenue for our citizens to have available to them. And it's unfortunate that we no longer, citizens no longer have that mechanism, and that it seems largely to have not been a policy that we discussed or decided, but rather that was, staff didn't have time or interest to continue it. So, yeah, so, that would concern me. I would, I would not want to vote to get rid of it.
And that's not a decision that the council needs to make this evening, but it, I mean, the issue is whether or not you want a liaison for those boards.
That was your intent.
Yeah, well, I just know that
We don't need a liaison.
They're not, they're not active.
Yeah, they're not active.
Especially with the Police Advisory Board, the state, the state has taken all the teeth away from that board, so it's, it's just pointless to be on, you know, in my opinion, anyway.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Gohens, and a second by Deputy Mayor Weeks. Chair's going to call the question. All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it unanimously. Now, moving on to Item Number 7-3, the annual appointment of the deputy mayor. Now, this is going to bring nominations open to the public, excuse me, open to the floor. And I would like to see how each district, to see if they would nominate someone, and/or you can nominate yourself. So, and I would like to hear from each area. Your light is on, Councilwoman Cost. Are you turning?
I wanted to make a nomination for that.
Okay, I am going to go through each district. And since you want to make that, I will go with you first, and then work our way back to the front.
I'd like to nominate Pat Weeks to continue as deputy mayor.
Okay, Pat Weeks, okay.
And I would accept that.
And she's done a great job.
Oh, thank you. And I will say that I don't want to take it from somebody else, but I, I would love a chance to continue. I feel like I'm just getting rolling, so.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Weeks, who, okay. We got you down. Councilwoman Cost, Deputy Mayor Weeks, who are you nominating?
I'm myself.
Okay. Councilman Hearn, sir?
I'll nominate myself.
Okay, Councilman Hearn. Councilman Gohens?
I'm going to go against my own better judgment.
Okay.
And nominate myself as well. Because I scorned Councilwoman Cost last year for it. But, yeah.
I was one that nominated you originally.
Yeah, you did.
This should be interesting.
Myself. But it's going to be interesting.
Yes, it is. Mr. City Manager, you having any comments?
Uh, no, sir.
Deputy Boss, did you hear that?
Hey, that's a smart man.
Deputy Graham, WM and PM, whoa, boy. The moment we've been waiting for, then now it's on me.
Yes, it is. Absolutely.
You can always nominate me, and then, you know, all four of us.
Listen. I'm going to throw a monkey wrench.
Okay, so, 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 let me say it this way. I'm looking at two more years, two more years, one more year each. This is you all's last year. And the beat goes on. So, that is on myself. Okay, so, you know, if I really.
Finally got it.
Okay. Chair would like to take a 10-minute recess, and I need a second. Okay, we got a 10-minute recess. Second by Deputy Mayor Weeks.
That was a good one.
All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Let me speak to the escort. Ayes have it unanimously. 10-minute recess.
I need to make, Chair like to make a motion to return from recess and I need a second.
Second.
Okay, did you get that Mrs. Shabow ma'am? Thank you, okay. I guess, so here we are on decision making. Okay, let me make sure I understand everything. Two votes for Deputy Mayor Weeks, one vote for Councilman Hearn and one vote for Councilman Gons. Nominations, yes sir, yes sir, thank you Mr. City Manager. Now, so here we are. Here's my rationale. As I alluded to at the very beginning before we went to recess. You two have two more years where this is the it for my tail end. Compartment raise, so I am going to cast my vote to Councilman Gons and then the tiebreaker. Or then we can proceed from there, so it's two Councilman Gons, two Deputy Mayor Weeks. And um, I am going to see if anyone would like to rescind their vote. Or what's the best and fair equitable way, go ahead.
I rescind my vote and, or my nomination and put my nomination in for Councilman Gons.
Okay. So that will give us three nominations for Councilman Gons, two nominations for Deputy Mayor Weeks. Be mindful, you guys still have more time to come. So, with that being said, I want to do everything decent and in order. And I thank you, you all, all four of you. Um, for taking on this challenge and meeting this standing on all ten, I thank you very much. So, with that being said, and let me get this right, City Manager. Uh, we have three votes for Councilman Gons, two votes for Deputy Mayor Weeks. It's nominations, sorry y'all, thank you again for the third and fourth and final time. Alright, do I need to do anything else?
Do they, do they now vote?
Yes.
Okay. No, motion, motion would be in order.
Okay. Chair like to make a, a motion to nominate Councilman Gons as Deputy Mayor and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Hearn, Chair's gonna call the question, all in favor of saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to city business. Thank you again, approve a piggyback of Stafford County, Virginia contract, RFP. Two five zero zero five for grant management services with Merchant McIntyre Associates. Using contingency and an amount of fifty-one thousand dollars. Approve a resolution amending fiscal year twenty-six budget. BAF hashtag twenty-two-ty-six dash twenty-one dash T. Authorize the City Manager to execute the contract. Issue the purchase order and approve budget modification up to one thousand two hundred. One hundred and two thousand dollars, excuse me. Should establish to continue services beyond the initial six-month trial period. So if we decide to do six months, we can do it for fifty-one thousand dollars. If we're pleased, we can do it for a annual contract. Is that my correct interpretation, Mrs. Singer?
Yes, sir.
And this is pertaining to federal grants as well?
Correct, sir, yes.
I just want to make sure, now the floor is yours just in case if I left out.
Um, exactly what you said, we are looking for, we looked at several different companies to assist us with. Um, finding and writing grants, particularly federal grants, but it'll be open to others as well. Um, they will sit down with staff and evaluate what our needs are, what our upcoming projects are. Um, and match available grants that are coming up. Um, and this is a company that has a, and a staff of expert grant writers and they have the expertise. Um, that we are looking for to help fulfill these services. So, um, we are looking to do a six-month trial period at this point off of the piggyback contract that they had with Stafford County, Virginia. With the option for the City Manager to execute, um, for a full year if we decide to, to continue.
Okay, we have any questions? Chair like to make a motion to approve, and I see your light, I need a second for discussion.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Deputy Mayor.
Not anymore.
I know ma'am, I just. Former Deputy Mayor Weeks with the discussion, Councilwoman Koss.
Yeah. Are we able to get, obviously of the, the seven years that I have served here, this is probably. We're probably in the worst environment for grants as it goes. I'm all for this, but I would really like to know what progress or what we have to show for it after the six months. Um, so I'd really like to see an amendment to the motion to include some sort of report back to us. And the reason that that is so important to me is because, you know, I'm getting questions from constituents. That live in park deserts. That where, you know, we're not responding to their needs for parks. And fifty-one thousand would be enough to at least get a ball rolling. Um, I'd like to see that this is really going to be productive for us. Or I'd just like to know what the result of it is.
Sure.
Um, having worked at the national level seeking grants. I know it's a lot of reading the federal register, I know it's, you know, some of it is knowing the right people. But, um, so it would just be important to see the progress. I would like to see the progress because I have to go back to my constituents. And, you know, if we end up spending a hundred thousand and we don't have. Anything to show for it that means something to them.
Sure.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
So can we make the amendment or can we just have an, an understanding?
We're, we're fine with bringing back a report on the progress of this.
Okay.
Now, again, Mrs. Singer probably needs to explain the process because as we bring. The organization on there, they're gonna meet with staff, the department directors to get their needs. And so that's an operational sort of administrative, um, discussion or direction. Now, if you want them to, to come and, and talk to the council with regards to some policy direction. Then that's different because we can't hold them accountable for things that. The council hasn't given me direction to push to the, um, to the organization. And so, I know parks has been a, a, a big issue with regards to you. But again, um, obviously we'll give them council priorities as they pertain to federal, uh, grants there. But if you want certain focus areas or certain initiatives, then the council needs to give us direction. You don't have to do that tonight, we can certainly come back and ask for you to actually provide some. Policy direction or guidance that you want us to give to the agency and be happy to do that.
Okay, and I think you said that, that parks has been an issue for me, but let's clarify, parks are an issue. For several of the neighborhoods, my constituency, as well as, um, as Councilman Hearn's. As far as policy goes, let's reference the comprehensive plan. Which says we should be looking for opportunities for everyone to have a park available to them within walking distance. We have a whole part of the city that is a desert for parks with a lot of young families moving in. And so those are the constituents that are coming to me, our young mothers that want a place they can bring their children. So, uh, yeah. I would like to see us, um. Certainly the comprehensive plan is a policy document. And I would like to see us take a look at that as well so that we are, you know, following this what essentially the comp plan, essentially our contract. With our citizens, that we have that in mind as we're pursuing these grants.
Yes, um, Councilwoman Koss, I wasn't, wasn't actually trying to single you out there. You, you've raised the issue of the parks, um, the aspirational comp plan. Um, statement with regards to parks there, so that was all I was trying to highlight there.
Okay.
There are a lot of things in the comp plan, um, that we could have them go after, we're gonna have to narrow down their focus. Um, and so, um, again, happy to bring back, bring the, um, the, uh, the firm in front of you to actually. Talk about where you're gonna narrow your focus to, to things that are within your comp plan and things that are within your capital improvement plan also.
Okay, sounds good.
Have a motion on the floor, but the chair in a second by former Deputy Mayor Weeks, Chair's gonna call the question, all in favor of saying aye.
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 Ayes have it unanimously. Proceeding on to item number eight dash two. Approve the second addendum to the improvement agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement twenty-two-five. Dash eleven dash ninety-six and we're talking about the lakes at, is that Cocoa Grove if I'm, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay, and also, Mr. City Manager, as you already know, Feb. thirteenth, we approve issue twenty-two-four. City Council approved lakes at Cocoa Grove preliminary plat, May twenty-eighth, twenty-two-four, City Council approved the lakes. Of Cocoa Grove final plat, subject to execution, December tenth, twenty-two-four. City Council approved the first addendum to improve the agreement. And Chair would like to make a motion to approve the second addendum to the improvement and agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second.
Okay, and I have a second by Deputy Mayor elected Councilman, Deputy Mayor Gons. Did you get that Madam City Clerk ma'am?
Uh, yes I did, sir.
Thank you Kylie. Mr. City Manager, is there anything that I may have left off or something that additional you can share with us, please?
Uh, no sir, you have a motion and a second and so I will not unseal that card.
Chair's gonna call the question, all in favor of saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it unanimously. A third and final item that was added to the agenda. This is pertaining to architectural elevation of PUD. I know Mr. Eric Roush is there. What I would like to say to review and approve the developers' proposed revision. The residential architectural elevation for the Winward Preserve PUD. Provide directions on whether the rise elevation remain consistent. With the approvals granted on December nineteenth, twenty-two-three for the new city of Cocoa Plain unit development. Under ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-two-three, Esquire Garganese, sir. I would like to hear from you just in case I miss anything and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Roush.
Um, no, I don't have anything to add.
And, and Mr. Mayor, Mr. Roush is gonna set the item up for you and he'll go through a very quick presentation and then. The, uh, the developer is going to present, um, their request. And so I think they have a PowerPoint presentation also and they'll take you through the swap outs that they want for the elevations there. But Mr. Roush will set it up.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, sir.
Alright, thank you again, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, this is the last item of the evening, which is the Winward Preserve PUD elevations. Uh, the requested action here is to review and approve the developers' proposed revisions to the architectural elevations for the PUD. And just provide direction on whether the revised elevations are consistent with the prior approvals from December of twenty-two-three. Essentially what happened, uh, is the applicant has indicated that their approval was two years ago. And their portfolio, architectural portfolio has been updated since then, so they no longer offer those models. These elevations were originally included within the PUD back in twenty-two-three. What we didn't want to happen was for something to get built that was inconsistent with what was previously shown to council. So, thought it was a good idea to have them come out here and show, uh, kind of a comparison of what was originally approved and what they're proposing today. Uh, so there's a number of models that are referenced on the slide. We did go back through the applicable development agreements, uh, we didn't find any conditions regarding. Um, specific architectural treatments within the units themselves. There were conditions requiring paver stamped concrete driveways, there was a condition regarding minimum living area. Um, and then there was a condition essentially saying that they can't repeat elevations, you know, um, next to one or across the street or diagonal. Uh, so all of those conditions will still be, um, adhered to. So, we've evaluated it, um, looked at the previously approved PUD, we looked at those previously approved conditions, uh, within the development agreements. We looked at, uh, the maintenance of architectural diversity detailing, massing and overall character. Uh, and then of course compliance with that minimum building size, height, standards that are all consistent with those prior agreements and the PUD. So, when reviewing the approved elevations against the new ones, we just asked you to consider the use of stone accents materials, uh, column details. Difference in the overall square footage, uh, roof styles, uh, presence of prominent front gables. Quality of the design of covered entries and porches and then variation in facade articulation and massing. Uh, the recommendation, uh, in terms of the motion would be to, uh, for City Council to review and, uh. Review the developers' proposed revisions, provide direction on whether the revised elevations remain consistent with the PUD approval granted in December nineteenth, twenty-two-three. Uh, in the prior conditions adopted by council. Uh, we've referenced, uh, conditions five, ten and eleven, uh, that I just spoke about, uh, that really formed the basis of the original approval. Uh, and the applicant's team here and, is here and they have a full presentation showing the differences of what was originally, uh, approved. And what they're proposing as a replacement, so with that, uh, here for any questions.
You have any questions for Mr. Roush? Okay, and, and, and this is district number three.
I know.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry, Julie Salvo with Taylor Morrison, um, Eric, do you have the presentation?
You should have it loaded up.
You said it to me earlier, so I wanted to make sure that we.
I think I'm, thank you Chief.
Thank you, oh, much better. Thank you very much. See, okay. So thank you for adding this to the agenda, I know it, it was a little last minute. We, as, as a company, we update our home plans every three to five years. We have a brand new lineup of homes that we would like to offer in Winward. They were literally just released. They were literally just released um this past fall. Uh, we are just now starting to build these homes. So we don't even have any that are people are living in yet. So these are, these are hot off the presses. But yeah, as Eric mentioned, um in December of twenty twenty three, uh council approved, um I guess it was eight, maybe seven um different plans. Each had about three elevations associated with them, so there was a pretty good diversity on our fifties and sixty-foot lots. But our new lineup will have eleven plans, um six on the fifties and five on the on the sixties. So this, and each have four elevations. So this offers even more diversity, more um variation, way less monotony. Um, it gives the consumers a lot more options. So we're really excited about the new plan lineup. Um, we have one and two-story plans available, and all of the plans exceed the fifteen hundred minimum square foot requirement. So I am not a design professional. I'm not an architect. I'm an urban planner. So I'm gonna just take you through and show you how they are, you know, they're similar. Um, I tried to arrange this to compare kind of what you approved previously to what's new. But I'm not like great at knowing the uh different architectural terminology, so we'll just kind of muddle through. And if you have any questions, I can always um get back to you.
Okay, and so we can, they can, we can ask questions as you go along?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so just to give you a quick rundown, um these are the the homes um that we're offering on our fifty-foot lots. So on the Aruba, Saint Thomas, Grenada, Barbados, and Bonaire, that was what was approved two years ago. And then in the other column, the Atlantic, Biloxi, Longboat, Carlsbad, Rockport, and Monterey, they were, those, these are the new plans that I'm gonna be showing you. And then on our sixties, again, we had three approved um two years ago, and now we have the five. So I'm gonna go through all of these. So this is our approved plan that was from two years ago, the Aruba. Um, so you can see we had a few different elevation options available. So now we're planning a new, a new version of that, the Atlantic. And so there are four elevations associated with that.
Can you just do it like the, like the eye doctor, just kind of go, is it better here?
Yes.
Is it better here, that kind of?
This? Or this?
Yeah.
Both.
Both. But I I believe, you know, these are substantially similar, so I, and I can just, um I'll move on, and if you want me to go back, just let me know. So this is the Saint Thomas, which was approved, and now we have the Biloxi.
No porches?
Yeah, that makes a big difference.
Some of the, some of the elevations throughout will have porches, um. That's the Biloxi.
So the, the, go back to the approved, so those are no longer available?
Right, these are no longer part of our.
Cause those have the pronounced entryways and the and the porches and, and then the, the uh the stonework.
Right.
The stone guy.
And and you'll see throughout, some, some have different facade materials used. I just tried to make them as close as possible, but they're not, they're not like-for-like necessarily. So I'll move on to the next one. This is the Grenada, and now we're doing the Longboat. Yeah, and these are about the same size. Uh, the approved plan, the Barbados. And now we're, oh, you know what? I think some of the slides got shifted, so this is not comparable to the Barbados. But you will see one later on that is comparable. Let me see if I can find what.
Did you hear me?
The Carlsbad, yeah. I'm, Lucy and I rearranged some of the slides before the presentation, so I'm not sure where it ended up. But let me see if I can find the Carlsbad in here. I don't know where it went. Well, we'll just keep going through, and then we'll, we'll find it. Oh, there it is. Okay, the Bonaire. And now we have the Rockport. So again, these are two-story, both two-story homes, similar size. And then the Sand Key, that's on our sixty-foot lot. And now we have the Astoria.
So those have stone there. When A's got stone.
The Craftsman?
Yes. We have the Saint Croy. And we're now doing the Bainbridge. And the Amelia is now the Bradley.
Yeah, I'm not, I like those with the front porch. I like the previous plans with the front porches. I don't see that on any of these. People like front porches.
Yeah, the issue with porches is it makes it more of a community, you know? People are outside, they interact.
I have a front porch. I love my front porch, so anyway, keep going. I know you're going through. Cause I haven't seen any porches on any of your new plans.
What was that one? No?
Nope.
So these are some of the additional homes that we've added to the lineup that don't necessarily have a comparable version.
Uh, to myself, supporting front porch, if possible, if we can do some modifications or anything.
Cause so many of these, it's like the front door is flat with the, with the house. Yeah, it needs some depth or something.
What, what are the two uh elevations that you want to do as the models?
That would be the lo, this one, the Key West, and the Longboat. Let me see if I can find that.
Is that all of them?
Yeah, these are all the plans. Um, specifically, the mo, the models that we're currently pursuing are the Longboat, which is on the screen, and the Key West.
So it's just those two models with these four different?
We're just doing two models for now.
So, so, so they, they, for now, they can actually do the model homes? And so the model homes would be the long, Longboat, and then what's the other one again?
The Key West.
The Key West. And so again, you, you could, you could sort of bifurcate your decision. You could, you could, you could make a decision on the model homes, and then I think they hear your comments on the other models. So I don't know if you guys want them to do that?
I mean, we would appreciate your support on the models, and you can definitely.
On all of them are the model homes, because I'm not sure in that, I'm not sure in that I hear the council's gonna get there tonight on, on all of your elevations.
Okay, I mean, if we can, if we can, if you'll work with us on the models, we can work with staff. Yeah, um I'm gonna invite Fred up, Fred Miller, he's our VP of Acquisitions.
Councilman Hearns, um Councilwoman Weeks, and then I, okay, I didn't know if you were friendship.
Yeah, I did.
You good?
I'm good right now.
So Fred Miller, uh VP of Acquisition for Taylor Morrison. I just want to give you a little bit of context as far as the plan lineup and how it's changed over the state. So we are a regional, so national home builder, but our regional office, regional president, or I should say area president, is out of Sarasota. Across the state and specifically in central Florida versus some of the coastal communities. The feature, I don't know if you can toggle back, but the feature that you were, uh, one of, maybe it was a deputy or a prior deputy mayor, uh Weeks. Well, I'm gonna follow up right now after you make the same mistake. But uh, go back to some of the older plans that had the pronounced, um, yeah, maybe back. So that's the approved.
Yep.
So what, yeah, the approved, not the new plan. I want to just.
You wanna see the approved plan?
No, I wanna see the, yes, the approved plan. So you were, you were mentioning the covered entry, and if you see how the garage is pronounced uh forward of the main massing, um from an architectural side, and I'm not an architect, but obviously I slept at a Holiday Inn last night. But uh, that's called a snub-nose garage. And oddly enough, coastal communities tend to prefer that type of design. The minute you get into central Florida and some of the middle part of the state, they actually dislike the snub-nose garage. And so they actually have more, they would rather have a front massing where there's some sort of separation to the rear, not to the front of the massing for their garages. So unfortunately, you know, as a regional home builder, trying to get obviously efficiencies in scale, building in Sarasota, Naples, Tampa, all of the central Florida five-county areas, and then, you know, we've expanded over into Brevard and Volusia, trying to get a, a plan lineup that meets all of the planning criteria was really where the design group for the region or for the area. That's what they were charged, because what we were finding is these plans that you like, we were having issues getting them approved in certain central Florida municipalities. So they thought that they were trying to actually, you know, obviously identify the mean of all the areas. And so the plan lineup that you're seeing is kind of that mean of all of these different municipalities. We do have structural porch options, so there are planned lineups that a consumer can come into the design center and see.
Okay.
But those obviously have more costs. I mean, everything that you're seeing with a structural porch, you know, just in our world, like now, if you could maybe toggle to a newer uh plan, cause the older collateral didn't really identify, yeah, newer one. So what you'll see, yeah, right there, and I just want to point out, you'll see in the bottom right, it'll say tradition. Then we have a farmhouse, then we have a coastal, and then we have obviously a craftsman, you know, four different or three distinct type of uh design vernacular. The traditional is from a, from an operations standpoint, that's how our system is built. Everything is a traditional, and then you add different features inside of our system to then either change it to a coastal or craftsman or a farmhouse. There are structural options that a consumer can come in and choose to go into a front porch design, but there's an added cost. So we're not sure, we're obviously, the collateral that's being presented is really towards more of the mean of the market. But when they come into design, if that consumer definitely wants that front porch, it is available, but it is an upcharge. So I, the collateral doesn't necessarily depict exactly what's offered, but it's what's being marketed.
So they're semi-custom, in a manner of speaking.
Certain, certain fe, certain features. As a production home builder, we like to stay away from that.
I'm a realtor, so I understand, yes.
Right. Um, but, but, you know, there are, you know, so there, I guess my point being is if council, I think to Julie's point, if council could work, because I think both models have chosen the farmhouse elevation, which again, maybe doesn't translate as well here coastally, but in, or central Florida, everybody wants the farmhouse. It's just a hot new design that's really kind of taken over the central Florida area. Coastal, Craftsman, Craftsman's really more of a, a, a central Florida type of, uh, you know, neo-traditional design. Coastal uh is probably where you're, you know, I, I would presume, because this is a coastal market. But um, you know, obviously, we'll do whatever council wants. Usually when we give concepts and we give renderings, two years go by, there are plan lineup changes. And that's driven typically by consumer feedback, market. We would greatly appreciate the models, but if it's something that council can't live with, we're happy to come back and show you some other elevations. But I do want to just kind of emphasize that just because you don't see it on the collateral doesn't mean it's not available to the consumer.
Gotcha, okay.
Councilman, all right, sir.
Yes, um, I appreciate you guys. I know you put in probably a lot of hard work to bring these renderings to us. Um, I heard there was mention of, of the new design is supposed to offer the consumer more um customization or or more uh, more to offer. And I'm not sure if that includes also you guys are trying to do a cost savings as well to it. But I think back, you know, from my time on the council, as we discussed this whole entire project, um it was, at least I, I um took it as we were gonna be high-end homes. And a lot of the surrounding neighborhoods, they were concerned about their property values being affected. So the product that I recall seeing, you know, that, which is like the old design, I, I actually liked the old designs. I think there was discussed of paved driveways, and um I ju, I just envisioned a high-end product. And, and not as an insult, but uh if these homes were selling maybe around the three hundred fifty range, I could probably go for this, but you know, from what I saw online, these homes are gonna start at like four hundred thousand dollars and up. And um I, I just have trouble accepting these renderings here. And um personally, from my take, I would love to see something else, um much similar to the, the approved uh renderings that were shown. But that's just my take.
Let me just uh, and I understand your preference from the design side, but let me just speak to the economics of how the, how the price, the prices of the house. So what, you know, we underwrite uh financially model, we get it approved, we obviously come to council, then we go through site development, and then we launch the homes. We underwrite based off of always current market conditions. So uh these prices are slightly lower than two years ago, because the market as a whole, overall central Florida has dropped across the board anywhere from eighty to fifty thousand dollars on uh base price options, just what we call all-in sales price, ASP. But these homes are still being modeled, and there were some cost savings, but not significant to the point. We're not saving fifty, sixty thousand dollars a home. We might be saving ten or twelve by trying to look at wet walls on two stories and just get a little bit more efficient with our, you know, there's just, there's certain construction aspects that, that are utilized, making sure that there's not as much free cut lumber, making sure that uh widths of bathrooms can go in with tile that doesn't need a lot of cutting. So that's more of a labor type of cost savings. But, but again, I just wanna, we model it, and then we go to market, and we do what they call a project opening report, POR. And so that's where we kind of look at the current market, look at everything, how it's been selling, what we underwrote, and then obviously our cost to actually produce the development, and then we, we launch pricing. So this isn't finalized, it's going through, it will, you know, we're, it's really dependent on whether or not we're able to move forward with at least our models. But the pricing, and this is an average, I don't have it by every plan, we can definitely give you that information as a follow-up. But the fifties are gonna start, so the fifty lineup that uh Julie was walking through is gonna start right around, uh, well, it's not base, but all-in sales price is about five oh four for the smaller square footage, up to six hundred and seventeen thousand. And that's gonna be on your fifty-foot lineup. Then when you move into your sixties, which is obviously a larger lot, larger square footage, um six thirty-six for the small, uh the smaller square footage, and it is, and, and we're modeling as high as seven forty-eight. We could, I could give you take rates. Obviously, this is a new lineup, and so we don't have a lot of sales experience with these specific floor plans comparatively to what we uh presented. But this type of buyer that we're expecting to come into the gated community, cost of ownership, meaning HOA and just CDD, there's, there's gonna be a monthly charge. And so when we look at this consumer segment, you're going to tend to get the larger square footages. But as a builder and as a business operator, you still want to, you know, obviously, offer a square footage that, you know, somebody, cause again, my first house, when I bought, I bought in central Florida, I lived on Sixteenth Street in Cocoa Beach for a while, but uh, uh, living, my first house was eighty-eight thousand dollars, right? And so now first-time home buyers are three fifty, four hundred. So you're still having a five oh four entry point. So at no way is it entry level. In our entry-level designs, we wouldn't do stamped concrete, we wouldn't do pavers. But I understand, I understand your concern aesthetically. A lot of people like that front, front porch, they like that relief. But oddly enough, not everybody, just like rearload versus frontload. In central Florida, all the planning boards are trying to drive us to everything being a rearload entry. You start talking to consumers, and they don't want it. They lose their backyard, they actually like driving through the. You start talking to consumers and they don't want it. They lose their backyard, they actually like driving through the front. And so there's a conflict sometimes with urban planning, design, and actually consumer sentiment. But, but, but we hear you. But I just wanted to give you some context on pricing. We're not taking the pricing down just because the elevations.
Again, I, I appreciate that, um. I, I think back to our last meeting, we took a lot of heat dealing with HOAs and what was expected, what was, you know, I heard you mentioned, just because we don't see it, don't mean it's not offered. Um, I would prefer any decision that we make, whatever is being presented to us, it's all out there. You know, for public disclosure, so we don't have an issue where we come back, you know, a year from now and things weren't delivered as, as promised. So, that's it.
Um, Councilwoman Weeks, ma'am, and then Councilwoman Koss.
Your price point for these size homes is on par. Uh, and yeah, I can see where it's not, um, entry level at all, especially in a gated community. People will pay more to be in a gated community. And, you know, I don't speak to, I, I've been a realtor for twenty-two years, so I've seen a lot of trends come and go. The farmhouse, yeah, I can see that that, you know, may be an up-and-coming thing. I don't know how that's gonna go over here in Brevard. Time will tell. And the fact that you're doing it to what you're hearing, um, and your interior finishes, those are all gonna be more upscale too. A lot of times, people overlook the elevation outside. I mean, they want it nice, but they want their inside nice. Um, so I'll be curious to see what all your finishes are gonna be. And you are still doing pavers and all that?
Yes, we are.
Yep. I mean, I'm just, I know how many people I've shown who just love a front porch. And, um, especially people moving down from up north, they like a front porch. And we do get a lot of transplants from up north, so. Uh, but if you offer the option where they can add it on if they want it and add it cost, then that'll be on the buyer to, to do that. So, uh, at this point, um, you know, we move forward. Yep. Oh, let me turn that off, sorry.
Councilwoman Koss.
Yeah, and I'll just make the comment about the porches. And, um, this was, uh, shared with me by an architect, that when you design a community, if you want the community to really have a sense of itself, make it walkable, you have that outdoor venue. I know, living in Florida, it's a little different. Cause there's a big part of the year where you don't wanna be outside. But I can tell you, living in a neighborhood that does have a lot of outdoor, that that is where all the community building takes place. So from a council perspective, it's nice to have neighborhoods like that. So I would just hope you would, uh, take that into account.
Absolutely, yes.
So, what are the wishes of council?
I'm gonna move to approve.
I'll second. Just gonna call the question all in favor saying aye.
Aye.
And a nay's.
Uh, go nay.
Okay. So you have to bring it back then. Is that the correct interpretation?
Yep.
Okay, let the record reflect, we have three nays, Councilman Gons, Deputy Mayor Gons, Councilman Hearn, and Councilwoman Koss, the yays was, uh, Councilwoman Weeks and myself in the chair. Okay, yes ma'am. I see you shortly. Okay, this concludes this portion of council. Okay, and we will proceed to reports. I have reports. Greg Stoll.
Bless his heart, he waits a whole time.
Uh, good evening, everyone, council staff, uh, and who's ever left. We had our, uh, S E T P O C A C report, or meeting, uh, on Monday. Uh, and I just wanted to throw a couple of things at you. Let's see, how about that way? There we go. So, uh, most importantly, first two items. Uh, we have a couple of public hearings coming up on the widening projects, uh, for the, uh, Clear Lake Road, uh, from Michigan over to Industry. F dot project number, date and time, January twelfth, five thirty-seven, Travis Park. And, uh, I'm sure you're familiar with this already, uh, it's that section right there. And so I definitely wanted to get that out there to you all so that you could get that to your constituents. You know, we all know how, uh, the Clear Lake Road Safety Improvement Project went down.
Can you go back, what time was that? I'm trying to put that in my phone.
Travis.
Yep, thank you.
I, I'll go ahead and I, I did send it to the city clerk, but I'll send it to y'all's email.
Thank you.
Uh, because I also have the, the link to the, uh, Central Florida Roads Project. So, yeah, this is, and, and of course, you know, that's Brightline Station, right? Next one. This is gonna be from. Cocoa Intermodal Station. Uh, widening project, the five twenty-four, this is the P D and E, uh, study. Uh, and they're gonna do two, they're gonna have a virtual meeting, uh, on January twentieth, same time, five thirty to seven. And there's a link to it. And then they're gonna have an in-person meeting, January twenty-second, same time, out at Holiday Inn Express and Suites out on Tucker Lane. So I imagine they're gonna have the, the design guys there with their billboards up, kinda like what we had seen for the Clear Lake Road. So I thought this was real important to get this all out to you. Uh, so I'll kinda just leave that. We can just do that. A couple of other things that I noticed, uh, uh, F dot is, is finalizing their tentative five-year work program, twenty-seven to thirty-one. And, uh, I believe the governing board will be voting on that on Thursday. A couple of things in there was the Michigan Avenue East Coast Greenway Trail Link. And then, uh, I, I didn't fully understand this one, the Railroad Safety Crossing Improvement Traveler Information System. So this didn't sound like the grant for improving the crossings. This sounded like something else, but I wasn't able to run it to ground. But anytime we can improve railroad safety, sign me up. Uh, and of course, our Cocoa Intermodal Station. Uh, we did get a couple of presentations, one of them on e-bikes. And of course, uh, you know, I had something to say, you know, really this has got a, it's, uh, there, there's a federal portion of this, there's a state portion of this, and there's a local portion of this. Because to me, uh, you know, what I had stated was, you know, uh, some regulations, if you live out MIMs, some, some local regulations when you live out MIMs should be certainly completely different than if you're in downtown Cocoa Village or out in Vieira, right? And, and so there's something for all along the way. And also something that just came to mind, looking at the presentation for the, uh, uh, housing development was golf carts. And so of course, there's a difference between golf carts and low-speed vehicles, right? Uh, and we know that disaster's coming, and we just go out and look at Vieira, low-speed vehicles, headlights, taillights, uh, license plate, insurance, golf carts, go drive on the golf course. And then lastly, it is, uh, the state of the system. Uh, what do you know, uh, on the Vision Zero High Injury Network, we had none of our intersections or tri, uh, uh, paths listed on the High Injury Network anymore. And that's really what was part, uh, the impetus for doing Clear Lake Road, right? And, uh, but what we did have, the only thing of note, and this will be no surprise to anybody, but on the congestion and reliability, we had a couple of circles, one of them being five twenty and, and, uh, US one, and there's another one out there, but anybody who drives our roads knows those. So that's my observations, and Mayor Blake, have fun Thursday.
Thank you, sir. We'll be there. Uh, Councilwoman Koss and myself.
I may join the party.
Yes, there's always room at the top, young man, always room at the top.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your quality time, sir. City manager, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mrs. Singer and Chief Lamb have reports.
Okay.
Do you wanna go first?
I yield, I yield to you.
Just a quick reminder before I do this one, um, we have our Cocoa Rock Lodge Holiday Parades. We, well, two things, Friday, Saturday, Friday night is the tree lighting, um, boat parade and movie in the park. And then Saturday, we have our Cocoa Rock Lodge Holiday Parade and, which leads into the Holiday Festival in Riverfront Park. So just wanted to remind everybody, and I think the, uh, Main Street is doing a, um, Hot Cocoa Cookie Crawl as well in the village. So lots of stuff happening.
Friday night?
Huh?
Tree lighting's Friday night?
Yes, tree lighting is Friday night.
With the boat parade?
With the boat parade.
Yep.
It go, it, it kicks off the boat parade with the tree lighting, and then after the boat parade is the movie in the park. Um, so just wanted to remind everybody of those events that are coming up this weekend. We have created a survey. Yeah, okay. We created a survey, so, um, uh, most of you know, you all know, you approved for our fitness court to be installed at Provost Park. Um, you can see on the top right picture, all, all of these are fitness courts. Um, but it has a wall, um, that is built, one side is the fitness court portion, and then the back wall will be the, where the, um, exercise, uh, area is for fitness classes. Um, and so on that wall, what we, what I call the back wall, but it, it's where the fitness classes will be, there is a mural. You can do custom artwork. So these are just examples of other communities, what they have done, um, for their artwork. So we have the opportunity now, while we are working on our fitness court, to, um, create our mural on our wall. And so, um, I give Stockton the credit, it's his brainchild. So we want to, um, do a mural that incorporates some of the historical figures in our community. Um, and I just Googled quick some, some artwork that would be similar to that. It wouldn't necessarily be photos because photos are gonna be hard to make bigger when you, especially when you're dealing with hard, older photos. The resolution isn't as good, so you can't enlarge them. So it'll most likely be more of a mural style. Um, so something similar to something like this. Um, and so what we're going to do is create a survey, I've created a survey, I put a Q R code on here so you all can quick take a snapshot. I, we will be promoting this as well. But we are doing a survey of the community to, um, give us names of people that they want to submit to be included in the mural. So, um, it'll give them the opportunity to submit a name and provide a very brief description of why they want that person to be included in the mural. Um, we will, uh, accumulate all of the names that we get submitted and, um, present that to you all for a decision before we go to design on that mural.
And, and Samantha, let me, let me just jump in. And so, as we go to the community, they come back with names, and you all are the defiant, the final decision makers on, on the name submitted. Let's do a hard stop right here and, and ask the council, are there, are there any names, individuals that the council absolutely believes before we go to the community should be on the mural? Because again, people get easily offended when they, when they come back with their suggestions and you say otherwise. And so, so again, as Samantha and I, uh, talked about the process today, this was sort of the fairest way, or maybe not the fairest way, depending on what side of the recommendation you're on, um, to do it. And so again, if, if the council, um, if the council has any, uh, recommendations in the moment, or if you want us to delay the survey and come back, we're, we're on a timeline, Samantha.
Um, we just, we, uh, we have a little bit of time, but yes, eventually we're gonna be on a timeline cause it's gonna take them some time to design it, um, and then they have to get it shipped and install and all that.
But if the council came back the first meeting, if we put, put this as an item, first meeting in January for the council to put forth their consensus or voted individuals there with that.
Sure.
Interfere, we could do that.
That'd be fine.
So we could do that process first, we could go council recommendations first, and then if you don't fill out the mural, I forget how long this thing is, um, my picture will probably take up a little bit. So, but seriously, if, if, if they, if it's the desire of the council to, so, well, let us have first crack at it and then go to the, to the survey, then please let us know now.
How did nobody else laugh at that? That's what I wanna know.
Well, I'm saying, could, could each one of us give like five recommendations?
There you go, five.
Five individuals to think of.
Okay. Well, I'm coming straight down. I'm coming straight down. I won't deny you.
Where you guys vote on?
Yeah.
Just do five each? Cause I don't think, um, twenty-five are gonna fit on.
Oh, yeah, they got the collage.
Oh, that's a big wall, sorry.
Um, remember, it's this, this is your, what you're looking at.
Like twenty feet, forty feet, you know, kinda sort of?
I don't know, I have to touch my head, sorry.
Uh, okay, well, let me throw something at you. I, 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 I'm, I'm moving with that. Let's go, instead of five, maybe three. Now, but let me ask you one more other thing, and then I'm gonna come down here, everybody. Um, if they have something already in their name, is that like a duplicate? You know what I'm trying to say? I would like to try to get some of the unknown.
Something different.
Right, you know what I'm saying? Um, um, that, that's what I'm saying. You, 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 you get one, so, because if we already have something already, I'm like, stop. You know, put my picture on it, no. You know, I would like some of the others that we know that contributed to the success of Provost Park and the entire city of Cocoa as well. Um, and, and, and that's my thing. That's what I recommend. I mean, am I making sense to you all? Okay, I'm gonna close my mouth. Uh, my, let's come on down. Uh, Councilman Hearn.
Oh, you want me to get the names now?
No, 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 just a number and.
Uh, I'm, I'm good with three.
Okay.
Three.
Three. Councilwoman Koss.
I'm just like, who, who's gonna do these portraits? I mean, it's not, are we gonna have something like they have on Bank of America now?
So we have a, um, they have a designer, the fitness court, uh, group that we are working with to build the fitness court. They have a designer that will design the, the piece for us. So we submit the pictures and we'll submit information on each of the individuals that are selected. Um, and then they'll come back with, um, probably a few design options for us to select from. Um, and then we can go back and forth with changes.
And it, it has to be people.
It, it doesn't. I mean, that's, you can see, it can be anything. We tell them we want it.
And my, my original vision was that it, that it is, it's a, it's maybe a picture or something of the person, but it's the story behind the person there. Now, I know some, you know, again, Samantha doesn't give me credit for my marketing expertise, but, 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 but they, they do have what they do, and we're gonna try to push the envelope on, on what we ultimately wanna do. So my, my vision was you'd have, um, the person and then the, the, the sort of story or the relevance of the person in the community.
On the mural.
On the mural, on the, on the wall, I'll say, cause I, I wasn't thinking mural. Yeah, so I was, but, but again, they may, they may, you know, again, they may, I mean, included in the cost is I guess the mural painting or maybe not.
Yeah, so this is, the design is part of the, the cost.
So it, so it may cost us, maybe some cost differential if we wanna do it, let's just say the Stockton way, you know? But again, you know, for, to just have pictures and not, and fo, folks not to know who those are.
Yes, that would definitely be less people, so just keep that in mind, yeah.
And so what is the life of this? Do they give you any idea, like, is this gonna be here?
Shelf life?
Fifty years, yeah.
It's like honey, honey.
Yeah, I mean, they. Yeah, I mean, it should be.
There's no saturation point to you.
Is it like the bricks that we, or the painted pavement that we put down that's fading?
It's going to be more like your, like the electrical boxes, where it's like a vinyl, like a vinyl wrap on there, so it should last a lot longer.
That is a longer life, yeah.
Samantha, you didn't bring up about tomorrow.
Oh, sorry. I will when we're done talking about this, okay. So yeah, I mean, this, it's, so are you saying then, if you all select three, then we don't do the survey at all, right? You just, you guys would select the three? Is that what I'm gathering?
I'm good with three, because I think because of limited space and all.
So no survey?
Yeah, we all said three.
Because if we don't follow, because it's going to come back to us anyway.
Just, just remember, I just would like to remind you, some of the previous public art projects that we've had. But have not gone so well. So when we do, I mean, it's great, you know, to open it up and get those ideas, but we get a lot of people who get hurt feelings when those are not selected as the options. So I just want to talk.
Yeah, and it almost feels like, I mean, really, and I think Mr. Whitten's concept is to somehow tell the history, the story. Because that's, I mean, Provost has a rich history. So is that necessarily done by individual portraits? I'm just, you know, I've had several experiences in my professional life of commissioning art, and you don't like it when it gets, when you make too specific instructions?
And it's not necessarily a picture of just the person, like a painting of the person. It could, it's, they're going to create a design that incorporates the people with the stories. So it's not, it may not look like what you're thinking it's going to look like.
So the people may not even really look like the people.
It's going to be, yeah, they're going to create a, a design that will incorporate those historic figures with their story. It's not, yeah, it's not going to be like just portrait, 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 yeah.
It went to Cocoa.
And this is part of the cost?
Mm-hmm.
Are we good, ladies and gentlemen?
I would like to see the history expressed in it, you know, if that means individual portraits. But I'm not sure it does.
There's a city in, in South Carolina, I forget, I forget the city, that actually did it. I'll send that out to you all, so that you can see what they actually did. Sorry, Samantha.
And that's why, and that's why, you know, use some of these examples to just show you, they're not necessarily individual portraits. They're actually doing stuff. It's artwork. It's not just a portrait of the person. So that's kind of the thought process behind it, and we can...
Kind of almost like a moving picture thing, yeah.
And again, we have opportunity. That's why the sooner we get it in, as far as the people go, we can get a design back, and we can go back and forth with them. So we want to allot some time for revisions and changes, so.
Art by committee, whoa.
If we go with five and just shoot for the stars, if they can't accommodate the five, we can shrink it down to three?
Can we just say like what they did?
Right, yeah, yeah. We tell the story. We tell the reason why we want to put this individual.
Can I say something? If we got room to add more, then we can always add, you know what I'm saying? We can always easily build, it's just like buying the house, I buy this. It is now, but I can always have, you know, room added. Because I already know what, I got my idea already.
My people ready to go now.
Yes, sir. I'm ready myself.
You can always add that porch lamp.
Bing, 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 bing.
Okay, so I will come back. I'll bring back an agenda item for the first meeting in January for you all to give your selection of your three choices, and we can have that discussion.
All righty. Okay.
Okay. And just a reminder, we have an event tomorrow. We have pictures with Santa and his many helpers.
And Mrs. Claus.
And Mrs. Claus, yep, the whole Santa family. And so, but what's special about these pictures is that our, our lovely council members are going to serve as Santa, Mrs. Claus, and the elves. So they have agreed to dress up and get pictures with our residents. And you can come out and get a picture with our council members in front of the tree that's out here in City Hall Lobby tomorrow. I can't remember the times off the top of my head. I think it starts at four, yeah.
But it's for the food drive, right?
It's to support our food drive, so we're asking that you either bring a five-dollar donation, or canned goods to support our food drive. As you all know, we have, we are in a friendly competition with the city of Rockledge to South Cocoa to collect the most food. And again, all of that supports the great need for the Central Fire Department Steering Center.
Can I add to that? If, if I could have the rest of the council's attention, I've already talked to the mayor, and I would like us to, if you, if you have time, to come in early, like, I'm thinking maybe two-thirty, or at least two-thirty, because we've got to be down here at four, to go around to the departments and thank all the staff dressed in our costumes. I have some things that I'd like to give to the staff, and we've got candy cane, stuff like that, so. Dress like an elf, yep. So it's a humbling experience. Hey, I'm going to be Mrs. Claus. So anyway, if you can come and do that.
Can we make it three?
Yes, three o'clock, I think.
Make it three?
Make it three. Do you think we can get through the whole building in that time and be back down?
The people are not going to want us to hang out with them.
No, no, I know, but I just know, anyway, I just want to make sure we have time.
Three o'clock, if you could be here at three, that would be sweet.
That would be wonderful, yeah, because at three o'clock, my wagon is heading off to departments. Okay, thank you.
Proud Mary, keep on moving, rolling. Okay, rolling on the river.
That's all, that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
So I just have a couple items to update you on. One of the tops is our high school graduate program for our fire academy. We, we have been very successful at that, and just last Thursday, Matthew Schaller, who is in it for this term, has just finished phase one, and he graduated from Eastern Florida State College with his EMT license, so we're very proud of him.
Charlie, I know that boy.
Yeah, he's doing very well. So with that being said, I think council has a lot to be proud of. As Chief Moore and I went to that graduation, talking to the instructors there and getting the positive feedback, not just from the program that we're doing with them, but also from the students that we have sent them, and what an impact that's going to make on their lives and in the community has actually been phenomenal. So we're very excited about that and the positive feedback we're getting from the instructors at the college with the students we're sending them, and the quality of students. So we're pretty, pretty pleased with that. Second thing I have for you is November fifteenth, we did a large-scale exercise drill with Brightline. We had a little over two hundred responders and participants there. First and foremost, I would like to say thank you to Samantha and Jamie and their staff for coming out on a Saturday to help us with the PR coverage on that and the interviews that we did. We actually had some pretty big, prominent people from out of DC and Boston that came down from the Federal Railroad Administration to watch that exercise and comment on it. A lot of the executives from Brightline actually came out and gave some good feedback on it, so it was very, very well attended. Brightline has been a great partner with us as far as the fire department's concerned when we deal with them. So being able to do that large-scale exercise, we're going to get together in the next couple of weeks, do a hot wash on it. But again, Samantha and her team did a phenomenal job in pushing out the information once the drill was over, you know, to keep everybody safe. And we appreciate them and FEC, because obviously FEC's tracks run along there too. And it was their spur line that we actually used to be able to do the drill, so it was a really good time. And then, the other, the other item that I have for you is, I want to just say thank you to Pam Shea and the Women's Club. They were huge supporters of the annual turkey drive this year. The local did a great job with that. They impacted more than eighty families within our community. But the Women's Club went out and really drove that bus. They collected sixteen hundred dollars in less than a few weeks to help put toward buying food, turkeys, and all that. So I had the opportunity to go speak in front of their meeting this morning. Never been surrounded by that many beautiful women at one time. It was a great time. Yeah, but it was great. I'm very thankful to them. They've got some big plans for next year and helping move that forward. So that collaboration with the Women's Club, the local, and the fire department really impacted our community, especially at a hard time when we had the government shutdown. You know, there's people hurting in our community, and to see that just that little bit of effort and those two teams joining together really made an impact on some homes, makes you feel good to know that Cocoa's doing the right thing. So, and then the last thing I have is, we should all count our blessings. We made it through hurricane season without being impacted. You know, we, the city needed a break. I mean, we've been hit the last couple of years pretty hard. We're still in recovery phases from Matthew and Irma and trying to get our boat slips back together. So we could not take another strike right now, and to see that, you know, the good Lord's hand was on all of state of Florida, really. I'm very thankful for that. I'm glad we're in December and past hurricane season. But I'm thankful for a city that's very resilient, too. We have bounced back from some pretty tough times. That rain event certainly didn't help us, but I can tell you, if you traveled the city ten years ago when I got here compared to right now, you can see the improvements we've made in drainage, in funding, and grants that we have got. That water is dissipating a lot quicker than it used to. So just to see those improvements and where we're at has made us a more resilient city, and I think our community sees that through the emergency management perspective, but also through city council's endeavors to try and do as much as they can to help alleviate some of that. So my hats off to the council and what you do for our community, and that's all the updates I have.
I appreciate twenty-four sixteen. Councilman Gons, sir.
Don't do it. Okay. Don't even talk about the basketball game.
I'm not going to get you today. Maybe my reports, I might have a photo of you, maybe. The message board on Rosa by the railroad track, is that, is that something that we did? Or was that something that FEC about telling people not to stop on the railroad tracks?
Yeah, that, that's through Brightline and the railroad administration. They put up all those message boards there. Trying to remember what Sam told me.
I got you.
I'm trying to keep him out.
That's all good.
FEC is really trying to do a lot of promotions with what's been going on with the Brightline trains and all. Their PR person has done a phenomenal job with that in trying to make more awareness of the crossings, the crossing guards, you know, things that you should be looking for. So they've been really pushing out a lot of good information and doing stuff like that.
Yeah, that's good. I appreciate it.
Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. City Manager, anything else before I go to our city attorney? Okay, sir. Esquire Garganese?
No report other than Merry Christmas.
Okay, Feliz Navidad. Yeah, man, yeah, man, yeah, man. Okay, I think, where are we? Councilman Hearn? Okay, start on your end, Councilwoman Cos. Thank you, Mitch. Thank you, Johnny Cash.
Okay, well, there's our district map. Well, actually, from our earlier conversation, you can see pretty clearly. I live right at the beginning of the blue over there, and it's not exactly, we're not exactly divided by neighbors, neighborhoods. But, oh, this is, I went over to Family Promise for the Elevate Cocoa meeting, and this is going on. Isn't that fantastic? The same artist, and I wish I knew her name. I should have written it down.
I'm sorry?
Maxine.
Maxine. So she did the original painting, I don't know if you remember that, from the inside of the building. But she is now doing the old, I don't know, what was that called, that building? The water tank, yeah. And it's just incredibly fun. And it just, it really just picks up the whole neighborhood having that there. So make sure you get a chance to go by there. But it's such a beautiful example of repurposing, you know, a building and making it a real asset to the community. And then this was the event at Orchid Lakes. It was their, was their community breakfast. And Rob Crump, as we pointed out earlier, is retiring, so there are a lot of singing his praises, but also talking about the state of homelessness and projects such as this, and they're gaining success within the region. So of course, there's Seda with Friends and Miriam Moore. I just so enjoyed music on the promenade. If you've never been, they had a bigger turnout this year than ever before. What a fun event. Everybody brings their chairs and the music and the water. And it's just, this is what really makes Cocoa so charming, things like this. Things like the murals and the little events in the park, where, you know, groups, large groups of neighbors get together. Saw numerous people I knew there. And of course, up in the right top corner are the organizers. They do such a great job, and they're, again, this is the largest turnout they've ever had. Probably a couple hundred people at least. And a lot of other people were there, too, at the Vaya event. They've opened another machine shop here. And the picture on the left is with Chris, who's the executive director at the Playhouse.
When was that, the Vaya?
The Vaya event was, what day was that? Last week, I think.
When we went to Orlando.
Oh, we were in Orlando, okay.
Okay, yeah. Anyway, talking with Chris, there, we can expect to see some changes at the Playhouse, from what I understand. He's really looking, you know, he's had some big shoes to fill.
Yeah.
But he's really looking at revamping some of their programming. And I won't steal the Mirror's Thunder, because I'm sure he's going to talk about this, but let me at least read. I do sit on this policy committee, and I'll read the policy statement. This was the biggest issue we saw anticipate for this year for utilities. The Florida League of Cities supports preserving municipal authority over the use of utility revenues to ensure equitable cost recovery, financial stability, including the ability to reinvest in system maintenance and transfer funds to the general fund. Maintaining this flexibility enables municipalities to sustain essential services and manage budgets responsibly. And of course, nothing has yet, no bills have yet been put up there, but we anticipate, given the writers of the last one are still there, so. And then last but not least is what I will continue talking about, that the park situation for that whole kind of corridor along Dixon, on the north side of Dixon, that includes Cocoa College Manor. It includes Cocoa Hills. It includes Pine Ridge. Lots of young families, dense area. You've also got the Westminster Asbury there, hundreds of folks, no park within sight, so. And I was asked this week about the fire department training area, which is five acres right over there in Cocoa College Manor. And I know that, you know, my response was that, you know, this is a part of our insurance. But a fair question that I was asked, and I'd like to be able to answer, is, first of all, it's over five acres, and a training area, you know, is not full-time usage. And secondly, what actually is the cost? So I know that it is serving our insurance, but is it just a small part of getting that certification or whatever? So I've asked, I'm asking the city manager to, to be able to evaluate that. And that's my report, because I will continue advocating for parks in this district board.
I'm up next, Mitch. While my thing is coming up, I totally forgot to mention to the people from the Windward Preserve that I got complaints that they have nobody directing traffic around where the construction is going on. And I had it written down here and totally forgot to bring that up to them. They're saying the school buses, the dump trucks are running right by the school, with the school buses and everything else. So we need to make sure that we get to them and say, they've got to have somebody there directing traffic around those entrances where the trucks are going in and out. When, the new Windward Preserve, yeah, down Friday Road and James Road, on James Road.
I want to give that to Jeff Johnson.
Great. Great, thank you. I finally got a District Three on there. And let me tell you, I am so untechie, that is a miracle right there. So I just had to put that up. So anyway, I went to the Florida League of Mayor's Forum, which you now, sir, as deputy mayor, can attend those things. And they're really good. I've learned so much over the year attending the League of Mayor stuff. And so that was, oh, I just popped that up there, that attending, that was from my committee meeting, which I have a picture of here in a minute. And this was one of the seminars. I meant to write this all down, but I've been running nonstop. That's Jeff on the right, and I can't remember which seminar this was.
And wait.
But a lot of good information. Every, all of this that you attend, you learn so much, you always take stuff away from it. This was the last session, I think on Friday morning. And the, about what's coming up, what's next. And again, a lot of, you know, what they think. And of course, the top thing is the property taxes. But there are a lot of things, other areas. And the gentleman on the left talked about water being so important that we have to keep that in, in our eyesight as well.
Dean Cannon was his name.
And then this was my committee, this is the chair, and of course, Holly, the president of Florida League of Cities. And this, he's our liaison, Charles. I have not gotten yet our policy statement that we wrote. They were supposed to email it out, and I have not gotten that yet. And I was trying to snap a picture of it, but I couldn't read it. And they said, "Don't worry, we'll be sending it out." Well, I don't have it yet, so I can't read mine like you did yours, so... Oh, and then...
Ours didn't change much from last year.
And my granddaughter and I went to Annie, and it's got two more shows at the Playhouse. I highly recommend it. Those young ladies do a phenomenal job. They have two different casts, but it's well worth attending. So that's me and my granddaughter attending that. And then this is the new gas station there at 524, the one right in front of Lost Lakes. And it's coming along. I was trying to take pictures of all the projects, but unfortunately, heavy rain for several days caused me not to be able to get my pictures. So as you can see, I took this out my car window. But that BP sign over there, and it's between them and Lost Lakes. But Lost Lakes did a survey, and that is on Lost Lakes property. So BP's gonna have to... I don't know how that's gonna work out between them, but it is on Lost Lakes property, even though BP's saying it's not, it's theirs, so... But I got a call from Jeff Fitch, the president of the HOA there. And he, tonight, on my way in here. And he said, "It is, he's got proof that it is theirs." So, but anyway, the building is coming along nicely there, so...
And they would allow it to be, they wanted it to be taken down?
No, they want them to pay rent for it. It's right there, and he's looked it up. And you can get, especially a lighted sign or anything like that, you can get ten grand a month.
Yeah.
In rent, so they want rent. And I don't blame them. I'd be doing the same thing, so, anyway. But that's what's going on there. And then I had to take a picture of the village in, out there. I mean, and I voted, I did my voting, I'm not saying who I voted for. You vote for the group and then the individual house. And how cute is that, what the staff did?
Oh, that is, yeah.
So if you haven't been out there and taken a look at that, let's see here.
Yes, sir, we have two of them.
Councilwoman Weeks, can I just jump in on this one?
Yeah.
Because I want to recognize the employee who came up with that idea. And it's, and she's a budget analyst. She's Zoe, I can't pronounce Zoe's last name, but what's her? Say it into the mic.
Uh, Battle Off.
So, so Zoe, who came up with that and pulled staff together to actually work on that. So, so kudos to her. We're really proud of her for doing that.
I understand the tech department, who are not known as joining, they did a great job. They joined in, I love their, their houses there, so...
I did.
Yeah, they did.
Yep, yep, they did.
Wiring is there on the left-hand side.
Yep.
And again, that's to support the food drive.
Yep, yep. I'm sure we'll have our picture made in front of it tomorrow. Also, I had a question. The commercial development going to the west of Publix on 524. Suddenly, there's not a stitch of machinery or anything else going on there. Do you have a, what's happening there?
Yeah, they, they are resubmitting there. So they, they had a site plan that was approved, they want to actually alter that site plan. So they're, they're resubmitting and that will be re-reviewed there. So I think they want to alter some of the, some of the ponds there, so...
Oh, okay. So we still don't know what, who they have tenants coming in.
It's just, it's, it's gonna be spec spaces.
Spec spaces, okay, wonderful. Well, again, I saw, I've been watching it, everybody wants to know, what's going in? What's going in? I'm going, no, no. So I was gonna call the leasing company and see if I could get some inside info.
They were, they're originally all commercial, and I think they, they're gonna attempt to do some, some residential.
Oh, okay. I don't know how they're gonna do that. But anyway, okay, I think that's it for me. It is, yes, off you go, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Hahn, sir.
Seems like we haven't been here for a while. All right, District Two. So it started off backwards, I was gonna say this for last, but I attended the Cocoa High Tigers, their semi, semifinals, state finals, or the Final Four game up in Bradford. It was a cold night, very, very cold. Think it dropped down like thirty-eight degrees, but our Tigers were able to pull off that game. It was a tight game, thirty-four to thirty-three. They advanced since then and made it to the next round where they played, what was the school? Cardinal, Cardinal Mooney. Cardinal Mooney. We were unsuccessful in that game. We beat them last year to go to the state championship. They were unsuccessful this year, but it was still a great run to even make it that far. Many didn't think they would get that far, so kudos to them. This is myself, I dropped off some Gatorade to support the guys as they traveled up on the road. And that's Ms. Nancy, there is always a pleasure to see her, big supporter of the, of the high school kids. And this picture here is more so, I presented this picture as a big thank you to the police department and the firefighters, as well as the Sharon Center. They stood out there just about all day, they were very enthusiastic, had many people coming and dropping off. I think they filled this whole back truck here, this truck here. So I was thankful for those men and women out there that raise this food for a great cause. Mark, who? Would you happen to know who this is to the left, this young lady here?
I don't, that hat.
And the glasses are throwing me off.
Better make sure she doesn't see this meeting.
That's actually Jamie. That is not, that's not Brenda.
Oh, wow.
You thought it was Brandon, they thought it was Brandon?
Great answer, great answer. Way to stay out the doghouse.
Officer Bill.
So I had the opportunity, I was invited by Ms. Denise Hearn. She invited me over as well, and she, she invites other council members to come over to, is it Clear Lake Isles? I had the chance to go over here with my daughter, speak with the residents, just spend some time with them. They had a lot of questions, much of it pertaining to what's coming in up front of their, the property that they reside on. Great crowd. It's my daughter there, she attended. She dropped off some gifts for the, the residents there, so that was a great thing. She actually just turned thirteen last week, so... Oh, yeah. And that's it. Hoping everyone has a great holiday. Till next time.
We're gonna have fun tomorrow.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I haven't tried my elf suit on yet. It's gonna be a bad day, maybe, I hope not. It, it's okay, I appreciate you, no matter what. It's okay. You're the guy. So this was a turkey giveaway, me and attorney Alton Edmond. He called me the day before and wanted to do a turkey drive. And so we ran to Publix, and they, shout out to them as well for giving us a great deal on, on turkeys. It was supposed to be only two turkeys apiece, but it was forty-nine cent a pound, so they helped us out a lot. So we fed fifty-one families in a day. And so, you know, to, to Chief Lamb's point, man, we just never know who, who needs what. Turkey is not my favorite thing in the world, but when you don't have food, turkey is like steak, so appreciate his staff as well for helping out. This was the event this weekend at Palm Bay, Eastern Florida State College. I'm a part of, on, on the board for Three-Two-One Empowerment, where there are twenty-six men from all walks of life in Brevard County. We come together once every quarter and have different speakers. This event series was, was named Financial Literacy. And as a young man, I wish I would have learned about financial literacy as a teenager. So, so fifty teenagers, ninth through twelfth grade, learn from experts about how to, how to save money, how to, how to do stocks in a simple form so they can understand it. This is Marcus May, plays currently, I think, you know, he played for the Jets. He went to the Raiders. So he's been in the league now for twelve or thirteen years, graduated from Holy Trinity. Cornell, did he go to Florida State? Oh, he went to Florida Gators, you're right about that, I'm sorry about that. So next to him, in the white shirt, is Cornell Spain. He graduated from Florida State University, graduated also from Melbourne High School. And, and so, yeah, all of us on the board, and we all just try to help these young people out the best we can. This was at the Sharon Center on Aurora. If you don't know, the Sharon Center is the bomb. They feed over a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and fifty people per day, seven days a week. And this young man is one of the cooks. This was on Thanksgiving. This is my eighth year volunteering at the Sharon Center. And again, you just don't know what you don't know. You, you really wouldn't know how many people who need food show up. And we serve them, they don't have to pick up anything. So this is our, some of the servers, Robin, and, and several other people that are, that came out. Her family has been doing it now with me as well for the last eight years, her and her sons. You know, good, just good family. This was an event at Endeavor Elementary School Thursday. This is one of our key to the city recipients, Trey Blake, was an NFL referee, Lloyd Roberts and his staff from Ecker Connects. And so, in the business schedule, NFL is going on right now. So for a referee to take his time out on a Thursday, after reffing a game on Monday Night Football, Monday, and to come to a school and talk to thirty-five to forty sixth graders means a lot. So shout out to Trey for taking the time to come back home and reach back into the community. This was at the same event for the Thanksgiving Day at Sharon Center. We had quite a few police officers, I think we had maybe five to eight Sergeant Stevens. How, you know how many police we had that day at Boys and Girls Club? Okay. And, and you, you ate a lot of food that day, too? Okay, all right, I just want to point that out. But it was a great opportunity to serve families. Again, Thanksgiving is, is a time to give. So a shout out to the police department for coming out on their time and just, you know, having a good time. You don't realize sometimes these kids having this time playing Uno with a police officer, what that does to their relationships. Because I guarantee you, some people in their family probably tell them to hate police officers because of the situation they've been through. But this interaction really saves, saves lives. It's one of the directors for Brevard Prevent, Brevard Prevention Coalition, I think, something like that. But she was there as well, another community partner. This is our board for Three-Two-One Empowerment. Again, all different men from many different walks of life, many different fields. The, the lead for Three-Two-One Empowerment is Ray Ballhead, which everybody is balled on this one. But Ray Herring is a graduate of Holy Trinity, but he also played football at Notre Dame. And now he's currently the fundraiser coordinator for Notre Dame football. So he raises over sixty, seventy million dollars for Notre Dame. And somebody who is around that kind of money is still trying to come back to his hometown to serve the community. This is another photo from the event, it's Kenny Johnson, a council member from Palm Bay, and also Michael Kador, City Rockledge as well. Another photo, this was from last night, but Thomas, what's his name? John Thomas. John Thomas is on our board as well, he's on the school board. Again, just shows the, just different diversity that we have on our board. There you go, I knew I had it. He was actually serving, but he was kind of eating at the same time. So, I don't know, you know. But again, man, shout, shout, shout out to you, man, for always showing up for the community. Me and Councilwoman Sammy Brown Martin went down to the City of Melbourne Council meeting to show some support. And also, it's good to see different cities and what they do and the things that they do different. But I'm here to tell you, we are doing pretty good in the city of Cocoa. And sometimes it's good to see others getting darts thrown at them. But, but it, you know, it's just a good time just to be, you know, amongst friends and, and to see interactions with community and, and their council. We gave the, so this was another, it wasn't, I'm sorry, these pictures are not together, but these are teachers from McNair Middle School. We gave every teacher a turkey as well that, that day, maybe about two days before Thanksgiving. Monica King, weekend is gonna be totally different in the city of Cocoa from what it has been. I'm, I will get the clerk office to send this out to all of you. We've never really had a four-day event. We always have done the, the walk and the service for sure, but now it's a business luncheon, it's a different things going on, so... And also, instead of a march, it's gonna be a parade as well. So we contacted Heritage High School, Rockledge High School, Cocoa High School, Cocoa High... Cheerleaders, Rockledge High Cheerleaders, and so many different civic organizations to have more of a march, but a parade with it. So trying to just create some more energy for young people to get more involved in Monmouth the King, understand who he is, understand the importance of community. And so I would get this, make sure I get this to Monica or Bree so she can get this out. And that is all. We're good. Yo. Sorry.
Last but not least, wow, man, it's a tough act to follow behind you all, man. And I, yes.
Let me just say real quick, our church, First Baptist Mary Island, 1,600 families we fed for Thanksgiving. We gave out full, 1,600 we gave out full dinners to 1,600 families. Well, that was, they gave it out on the Monday before Thanksgiving. They got the turkey, they got everything to go to make a Thanksgiving dinner. Yep. To our house, I hope.
Did you go to Melbourne on Thanksgiving? Well, I don't want you to get kicked out the fam, you better say something right now.
I think I did.
Last one, I think I did. But just to, so same thing that, that Councilwoman Weeks was talking about with community, giving back to the community. My grandmother, along with other members in the community, they donate food, but she, she hand cooked, not stuffing, no stove top, dressing and collard greens and cut up collard greens, but she served between 1,000 and 1,100 people. A lot of the volunteers in Melbourne area always help her out, pass out the food, but they did like a drive-through kind of deal. But that show you just from Brevard County, it's a lot of people that, that really dedicate their time to the community. So thank you. Also, thank all of you for, for the vote for deputy mayor. I do, in the past, it has not always been smooth, but, but today, I really appreciate all of you. Just, we had fun with it, right? It wasn't, I know we put Mary under some pressure, but, but, but I think no matter what would have happened, I believe that it would have been, you know, we all would have been happy with whatever happened. So I appreciate all of you. And I thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, my turn?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sirs and maams. Button to the right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. China cash. This is in the state of Utah, Salt Lake City. This is their council chambers. It's from a historical perspective because that, once upon a time was for the state Capitol, as you know, Salt Lake City, but that was the actual state Capitol building. So they renovated that facility, that edifice. And I'm happy to say that that's their small council chambers. It may seat maybe about 75 people. Had the opportunity to meet Mayor Erin Mendenhall, phenomenal lady here. As you can see, the office of mayor for the great Salt Lake City. Cole Ridge, there's no place like home. There's no place like home. Being in the sunshine state, I'm happy to say this is the event also with the National League of Cities, reapointed unanimously hand down with the Board of Executive Directors. And I'm happy to say to be a recipient of that. So we, not only do we represent our city of Cocoa statewide, but we also get nationwide. And this, as you can see, is part of their city hall.
If you pull the cap down over your ears, you'll stay warmer.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I know you want a roast, but Milton the monster, man, I was trying to get any cap to keep my scaldy, baldy warm, boy. It was very cold there. Here we are taking another photo. As Councilwoman Carl stated, we're at Via. This is the dedication, District One. Also, the gentleman holding the shears, the scissors, is one of my former students. And to our right, his left is Kevin Lautimer, who's the CEO for Via, and Greg, and Ann, and Joseph, and you can see Councilman Goins, Mrs. Fox, and Larry Brown. There was a group of youth that were there from FIT, I'm happy to say, that they represented. All right, here we go with Big Blue, what you gonna do? Barbecue or mildew? And here we are. We're barbecuing because we're touching the hearts of our community, unity in the community. And that's what community means, unity. And this is the tour drive, is that correct? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Here we are, Christmas Day, representing. Now, I, boy, I've never seen this many teeth, excuse me, so many teeth. Sorry, y'all. They were smiling more than a cheddar cat, man. I've never seen so many canine. As you can see, Big Blue, council members there, the Christmas tree, staff, city manager, Daylon, hair Wildcats, and myself in the back holding up the Christmas tree. Great photo. Love it. Immudule Kids came there and performed, did a phenomenal job. And also Mrs. Leslie Tibbetts, we adventure. We also gave the historical meaning of stepping and strolling. How it was, we were able to get a printout talking about the success approved by Mr. Cole, but also approved by city manager. So it's official and we will stand by that. There's power in numbers. When I see these shoes at the bottom, who do I think of? Judy Garland. Rubber red. Okay, everybody knows Platts right there. Is, is, is that it, Mitch? Is that it?
One more.
One more. Is it the same person? Is this different? Okay, this Platts and his beautiful wife, Ms. Connie, I think it is. Want to give a special shout out. As Councilman Hearn stated, Coach Snyder went to Bradford. I had the opportunity, we had the opportunity to have lunch with them, but it was also his birthday. So that was awesome. In my other photos, we had electric vehicle, police vehicle, GMC. I will share that picture with you all later. Kudos to CJ Hester. He was signed with some great school called the University of Florida. Also, we talked about the advisory toolkit. Well, I want to say thank you to all council members for attending the conference. We talked about navigating the challenges on Senate Bill 180. Property taxes through this educational portion, it's imperative that we educate the citizens of Cocoa and Brevard County. And it gives the economic impact. The city manager will get that documentation and we will disseminate it throughout our city website. It's important that you share it with the public because it will give our own personal reference. If they eliminate property taxes, which is not pleasant, you will see the economic impact. Services will automatically be diminished. And how do you pay for something when you take away revenue? So you have to be careful. That's not the number one priority for the citizens of Florida. It's the cost of homeowners insurance. That's the key pivotal thing. And that's what I wanted to talk about more so than anything, how we can gain insight from legal experts and local officials. The city manager attended that one, navigating challenges on the Senate Bill 180. And we will continue to fight. We have to put up a fight. It's like the old times when they would declaring the territory of Washington, 54, 40, or fight. And we're willing to fight all municipalities, all 411, I'm happy to say. And last but not least, I want to say buy local, spend local, keep it local, because, you know, local government is the best form of government because it's the government closest to the people. And it is a pleasure to see you all having your smiling face when we go to Legislative Week there at the Capitol come January. So we could take our voices to our state legislatures. And if by chance, unfortunately, if by chance, if we can get some type of communications with Senator Tyler, excuse me, House Representative Tyler Saroy and Senator Wright, I know we can talk with them personally. We all collaborate with them, but it's important that we do. I just want to say in conclusion, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah, and Feliz Navidad, Feliz Navidad. And I look forward in being with you all, city hall, Santa, and the effervescence elves. Our chair entertains a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Weeks and a second by Deputy Mayor Goins, go in peace. Remember the reason for the season. Thank you. God bless.
I just have one thing to say to you.